Today was day one of radiation.
Okay.
So far, I'm going about two hours in between and out.
No worries. Just give me an hour.
Just so you know, it might be more than normal.
No worries.
And I apologize for the basketball pants right now.
So it's just the one. That was not timed. Naturally, it wasn't stipulated.
Is it an impaired presumption?
It's good.
For to make?
Our friends in the closet. That you remind the residents to use the microphone. This meeting are where the ones who are.
We're apparently the bad actors that are not using it properly.
All right. I'll look glare at our board members.
So I just thought I would let you know.
Okay, thank you. And you have a training session. Feel like I have more easels than I do members of the public here. But that's okay. Means a well-prepared applicant. Anyway, appreciate that. Where she's sitting?
Stephanie, is this the extent of our membership? And we have Diana, which is good.
Okay.
Yeah, you know what? I think we need to just a little closer because we're a little short.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the April 3rd, 2023 meeting of the City of Summit Zoning Board of Adjustment. My name is Stephen Spur and I am chairman of the Summit Zoning Board. In accordance with New Jersey statute 10:4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to a newspaper of record and has been posted here in City Hall. This is a meeting. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision and quorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For the benefit of the interest of public, this meeting is being livestreamed to the city's YouTube page and also broadcast on Summit's government channel, which is Comcast Channel 34 and Verizon Channel 30. Please note that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room where you entered. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system here at the dais and return it after our meeting. Andy Ball is the zoning board's attorney. He will advise board members on matters of law and is the key interface with an applicant's attorney. Mr. Ball does not vote on the applications. Stephanie Sulios is a city employee and the zoning board secretary. Ms. Sulios assists applicants with the preparation of their applications, planning our agendas and keeping our meeting minutes. Ms. Sulios does not vote on the applications. Our board consists of seven regular members and up to four alternates. All members can participate in hearings tonight, but a maximum of seven can vote. Most applications require a simple majority to be approved. Some applications require five affirmative votes to be approved. You will be told which majority will be required before we begin our deliberations. Ms. Sulios, will you please call the role of the members?
Sure. Chairman Spur.
Here.
Vice Chairman Steiner.
Here.
Ms. Newell is excused this evening. Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Mullen is excused this evening as well. Mr. Malley.
Here.
Mr. Loykets is excused this evening. Ms. Toth is excused this evening. Ms. Sager.
Here.
Mr. Faskins.
Here.
Mr. Yuco.
Here.
You have a quorum. You may proceed.
Excellent. We generally hear the applications in the order they are listed on the agenda. We try to have each hearing last no more than 30 minutes, but we do understand that some applications are too complex to be heard within that timeframe. Each hearing begins with the applicant or their attorney giving an overview of the application and the variances that are required. We then hear from any expert witnesses the applicant may have to help explain the application and why variances are needed. Board members may ask questions of the applicant, their attorney, and the expert witnesses. Once the board professionals and board members have completed their questioning, the public will have an opportunity to ask questions. This is not the time to tell us what you think about the application. This opportunity comes at the end of the hearing. Before you ask your questions, please clearly state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address. It is important that our court reporter be able to keep a clear and accurate public record. The court reporting is conducted over our audiovisual system. So I ask that applicants, professionals speak clearly into the microphone at the podium or at the desk here. And the same goes for our board members. I've been reminded by those that are in charge of the audiovisual equipment to please, if we can speak clearly into our microphones. Makes easier to capture our conversations. After all witnesses have been heard, members of the interested public have their second opportunity to speak and at that time may express your opinion, positive or negative, about the application. Then the public hearing is closed and we enter into executive session where the board members discuss the application and vote. You will be able to listen to our executive session, but you will not normally be able to participate in the discussion. Most applications are heard and decided in the same evening. If an application requires additional information or testimony that cannot be presented tonight, we will carry the application to another date and it will not be decided during this meeting. Krista Anderson, the city zoning officer, has asked that I remind all applicants that they must read carefully the resolution that documents the zoning board's decision and to pay particular attention to the conditions contained in the resolution. For example, if a landscaping plan is required, you must obtain one and submit it to John Lindson, the city's forester. If a grading plan is required, you must have one prepared by a civil engineer and submit three copies along with the application fee to the city's engineering division. If they either satisfy all conditions in the resolution will result in a delay in approving your application as will necessitate additional follow-up from zoning and other city staff. The resolutions documenting the board's decision will normally be available one month after we decide the application. Before we begin with the public hearings, if you'll please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We typically roll through a lengthy list of public hearings. We have only two this evening, one of which is requesting to be carried. So before we invite 475 Springfield Avenue to come forward, Ms. Sulios, would you just quickly summarize the correspondence we received via email and the action we're recommending for the board?
Sure. 75 Tulip Street. That's block 3208, lot 2, ZB-22-2173. They were applying for a C variance for proposed addition to rear and right of home, both first and second floors, including an addition to the basement. So they sent me an email asking if they could carry their application. So we have June 5th available.
Okay. I spoke to Stephanie and Andy about that in terms of any concern about when the application was filed or concern with carrying this particular date. I didn't see any issue with it particularly. So to ask for a motion to carry 75 Tulip Street to June 5th without further notice and waiving the time with which they have, we have to act on the application.
So moved.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do you need a roll call on this, Stephanie? Yeah, okay.
Vice, I'm sorry, Chairman Spur.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Steiner.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Malley.
Yes.
Ms. Sager.
Yes.
Mr. Faskins.
Yes.
Mr. Yuco.
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right. Thank you. And on to the stars of the show this evening. 475 Springfield Avenue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Hillary Alls from Dempsey-Demcy &amp; Sheen, representing the applicant, 475 Springfield LLC, with regard to property located at 475 Springfield Avenue, block 1911, lot 3, in the CRBD district. This application proposes to renovate, upgrade, and modernize an outdated and functionally obsolete building that is architecturally incompatible with the surrounding area and lacks amenities customarily found in office space in 2023. In addition, the building is currently out of alignment with the surrounding streetscape, which has resulted in a cavernous facade with very little natural light and dark interior space. It also creates the potential for public safety concerns in areas that are recessed and not well lit. The application seeks to infill the four floors of the existing building to bring it into alignment with existing facades of adjoining buildings and to create a compliant first-floor retail space as desired by the stated CRBD objectives. Minor second-story addition in the rear that follows the lines of the existing third and fourth floor of the building, the upgrade of the existing parking area in the rear of the building, and the addition of rooftop amenities, new mechanical equipment, and ADA compliant access to all levels of the building, including the roof. In order to realize these improvements, the following relief is requested. Classification of the site plan. Preliminary and final major site plan. Variance for an FAR of 349.6%, where 299% is existing. Variance for building height of 46.83 feet, where 46.66 feet is existing and 42 feet is permitted. Variance for the number of stories. For four stories, where four stories are existing and three stories are permitted. Variance for the height of a pertinent structures of 17 feet, where 15 feet is permitted. Variance relief for the total building height with appurtenances of 63.83 feet, where 50 feet is permitted. And variances for the height of the rooftop lighting, where 15 feet is the maximum permitted mounting height. The testimony presented by the applicant and the applicant's experts will demonstrate and provide the proofs required to justify that the site can accommodate the problems associated with the proposed increase in FAR in building height. That the proposal advances the purposes of zoning, that the benefits to be gained by the surrounding neighbors, the CRBD, and the City of Summit far outweigh any potential detriment, and that the existing, pre-existing, non-conforming structure creates an extraordinary and exceptional situation that imposes a practical difficulty and undue hardship on the applicant in seeking to develop the property as otherwise permitted. The testimony will further confirm that the application will cause no substantial detriment to the public good and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the development regulations ordinance or master plan. Tonight's presentation will include testimony by the applicant's representative, Mark Yeager, the civil engineer, Nick Sappasaris, the architect, Michael Sass, the traffic engineer, Connor Hughes, and the planner, Paul Phillips. If the board has any questions for me at this point, I'd be happy to answer them. And if not, I would ask that the first witness, Mark Yeager, be called.
Any questions, Mr. Yuco?
Yeah, I have one question. Can we clarify the FAR variance? It looks like Krista Anderson is calling that the maximum loud is 225 and you're saying 300.
So Krista said it's 300% is the maximum. Well, I know. So she did say 225. The planner says 300. Regardless of what the planner says and what the zoning officer says, it's actually the Board of Adjustment that has the statutory authority and the power to interpret the ordinance. So.
Counsel, if I may jump in.
Yeah.
I had a chance to review Krista's memo. I had a chance to review the code on the FAR required here. There is a discrepancy between the parking provision that Krista was pointing to and the schedule of space regulations that the FAR and the zone provides. I'm going to recommend that the board go by the schedule of space regulations. The FAR permitted for this property is 300%, not the 225 noted in the parking regulations.
Okay.
So the variance would be anything over that 300%.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions from members of the board? The context, either of our professionals would like to add or?
No, I would agree with Ball's comment that he made for the board. The only thing I wanted to point out is whether or not a parking variance may be incidental to the additional floor area ratio that's being asked for. When you look at the parking requirement that does talk about the 225, it talks about no parking required up to 225%. Obviously, we're exceeding that. The existing buildings already exceeded that and that now they're looking to add a little bit more in order to further improve the building. So my question would be, and this is maybe somewhat subsumed in the actual FAR variance when they discuss this, is the intensification of the building, it's going beyond the 300%. So therefore, is that something of a parameter that you look at to see whether or not there's a detriment?
Okay.
As a result? I don't want to testify, but that would be my.
You'll have your opportunity. Absolutely. But no, thanks for flying that. And I'm sure you'll show some sensitivity in your presentation to these particular topics, so.
And I just want to say that, you know, consistency is paramount so that ordinances are not being applied arbitrarily. And in the present instance, based on prior rulings and interpretations adopted and affirmed by this board, it was determined that the parking requirement that the planner refers to, section 14.1P4, does not apply in circumstances where non-residential uses are proposed in the CRBD. Specifically, this board affirmed that interpretation in an application at 466 Springfield Avenue, where non-residential uses were proposed with an FAR just under 300%. There was no impact from that interpretation and the same interpretation, if applied to this project, would translate to the same result.
Though we're not necessarily bound to prior decisions, our application is precedent. It's interesting application for sure and useful context for us to consider, but we're not bound for a consistent application necessarily.
Correct. But and I think just to Ed's point, it's not necessarily pointing to the fact that the parking regulation or the parking requirement section definitely applies, but more of a factor of a, something to be considered as far as the FAR at this site is.
Absolutely. And we will present testimony with regards to that.
Wonderful. Excellent. Now, before we jump into your witnesses, I see an awful lot of suited gentlemen, but are there any members of the interested public here this evening? Not someone here on the applicant's payroll? No? Okay. Fair enough. Ms. Alls, you may continue then with your first.
Okay. We'd like to call Mark Yeager as the first witness.
So seeing that there are no members of the interested public here, I'm not taking that personally, but is it okay if we orient the boards?
Please do.
Towards the?
Absolutely.
Board as opposed to the?
Yep. Another one. Someone sneaks in, we'll flag him, but yeah.
Yes. Two, yep.
All right.
Can everybody see those? Okay?
Yep. And just, Ms. Alls, sorry, before you swear a minute. Is there anything to be presented on the boards here this evening that isn't part of the application?
Yes.
Okay. So when that does arise, we just can ask you to flag it for us so we can add it as.
Absolutely.
All right. Please, Mr. Yeager.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in this matter? The truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name.
Mark Yeager, Y.E.A.G.E.R.
Thank you.
And what is your occupation?
I'm a commercial real estate investor and developer.
And have you developed any property in the City of Summit?
Yes. I've been involved in a number of projects, new construction at 1 DeForest Avenue, 466 Springfield Avenue, 40 Beechwood Road, and 125 Summit Avenue, and have undertaken significant renovations on 25 DeForest Avenue and 535 Springfield Avenue as well.
And what is your relationship to the applicant of the subject property?
I'm the owner.
So you're authorized to speak on behalf of the applicant?
I am, yes.
And in your capacity as the developer for this project, have you brought an application before the board with regard to property located at 475 Springfield Avenue, block 1911, lot 3?
Yes, I have.
And can you provide the board with a brief history of the site, please?
Certainly. 475 Springfield Avenue was built in 1950s and has been owned by the Jenna Walde family for the past several decades. It's been occupied by a variety of tenants over the past 70 years. Most notably, it was the home of the Boris Steel Company until 1999, when Mr. Boris bought 25 DeForest Avenue and relocated his operations there. It's continued to be multi-tenanted since that time. The Jenna Walde family decided to sell the building last year and I was selected to be the purchaser of the building at that time.
Okay. And turning to the materials that are displayed. EXP 001, I believe underneath it is EXP 002 and AA 201. If they could be marked A1, A2, and A3?
Thank you.
Okay. And with regard to exhibit A1 and A2, did you either take or direct the photos to be taken by the architect of the existing building?
Yes, I did.
And are the three photos on those two boards reflective of the existing condition of the building as it stands?
Yes, they are.
So using A1 and A2 and sheet AA 201, can you describe the existing conditions as well as describe the challenges of the site in the existing building?
Certainly. So as I mentioned, the existing building was built in the 1950s. The building is non-conforming right now with four stories and a height of 46.66 feet and an FAR of 299%. It also has a non-conforming first-floor use as street-facing medical uses, which is currently in the building, are not permitted on the ground floor in the central retail business district. From an architectural and a streetscape standpoint, as you can see, the building's design and facade is extremely outdated and functionally obsolete. The dark cavernous facade recesses and very limited window line are not only extremely, very unattractive, they also make the interior spaces very dark, uninviting, and actually makes the space very difficult to lease as it does it remotely. Begin to satisfy the type of office environments that employers are looking to provide their employees today. The lack of limited natural light infiltrating the exterior envelope of the building needs to be addressed as part of the proposed renovation and repositioning project. As you'll also hear more about in additional testimony, the long, narrow floor plates, which are also significantly window-challenged, create their own issues from a place, space plan layout standpoint. Particularly, two sides of the buildings have no windows and one side of the building has very limited windows. The site itself also has some challenges. Access is limited to an existing easement agreement over an adjacent property owner's property. And the parking in the rear of the building is very tight and needs to be managed and monitored in order to be effective. Zero lot line conditions on three sides of the building, which is a common condition in the central retail business district, requires some creativity and effort to make sure that for prospective tenants and property owners, it all works and functions as it's designed to.
And can you just clarify if the existing building has a basement?
It does not.
And you had mentioned an easement. So are there any easements that affect this property?
Yes, there are actually three easements. One is what we refer to as the schwark easement, which addresses the proposed expansion of the second story in the rear of the building. And it also provides the adjacent property at 467 Springfield Avenue immediately to the east with the ability to park one vehicle for their tenants at the rear of the 475 Avenue building. The second easement is what we refer to as the alleyway access easement. As I previously mentioned, this is what allows access to these eight parking spaces at the rear of the 475 building. And then the third easement is what we refer to as the 52 DeForest easement. And that allows for the northernmost four parking spaces of the eight at the rear of the 475 Springfield Avenue property to overhang approximately 10 feet onto the adjacent to the north 52 DeForest Avenue property, which allows enough space for the eight parking spaces at the rear of 475 to function, circulate, and operate more efficiently.
With regard to those eight onsite parking spaces, can you tell the board how they will be distributed to the various building tenants?
As I previously mentioned, one of the spaces is dedicated to the neighboring property owner at 467 Springfield Avenue. One of the spaces will likely be dedicated to a proposed first-floor retail tenant. And the other six will be divided between the office tenants on a per-round basis, determined on the amount of square footage that those office tenants would potentially lease.
And can you please tell the board what the objective was for this property?
Yes, sure. So the renovation and modernization of an existing outdated building with little or no architectural and streetscape value and to bring the alignment of the building facade out to be consistent with the setbacks of the surrounding buildings. Additionally, from an office demand standpoint, Summit continues to be a sought-after community for companies and their employees. But the requirements and standards for high-functioning, new, efficient, and attractive space for those companies and their employees is an absolute must in a post-COVID market. Buildings built in the 1950s do not remotely possess the characteristics and attributes that users require today. So hence the desire and the requirement to renovate and reposition off or office, older office buildings to satisfy tenants' needs and desires of today.
And in effort to meet the objectives that you just stated, can you describe for the board what is proposed for this application?
We will integrate the building with the surrounding streetscape through the construction of a four-story, 2,682-square-foot front addition, which will eliminate the cavernous recesses of the existing building and bring the building into alignment with surrounding buildings to the east and to the west. Not only will this produce a new, attractive Springfield Avenue building facade, but it will also dramatically improve a very tired, unattractive streetscape. A second, we will construct a 1,120-square-foot second-story addition in the rear of the property over the existing parking, which will eliminate a very dark and currently unmarketable rear portion of the second floor, which is completely covered in shadow and shade. Third, we'd add a very attractive, functional, and desired rooftop terrace that will be set back from the face of the building. And lastly, all interior building systems and improvements, such as elevators, HVAC, plumbing, electric sprinklers, lobbies, common areas, restrooms, and all the demising walls will be updated, modernized, and brought up to current building standards and codes.
You mentioned a rooftop terrace. Can you explain to the board the anticipated use of this area and who will be permitted to use this amenity?
So the rooftop terrace will be a private space utilized only by building tenants and their invitees. We've created similar spaces at 1 DeForest Avenue, at 466 Springfield Avenue, at 40 Beechwood, and at 125 Summit Avenue. And all are highly sought after, desired by today's tenants and their employees.
Are you proposing any residential use for this site?
No.
What are the contemplated uses for this building?
On the first floor, street-facing on Springfield, we would anticipate any commercial or retail tenant as currently permitted in the CRBD. And any permitted use in the CRBD and the remainder of the building and on the upper floors.
The application proposes certain variances, which I would like to review with you as the developer of the property, recognizing that your professionals will describe the variances in further detail. The first two variances relate to building height and number of stories. Can you describe these variances?
Yes. Currently, the building's four stories, where three stories are permitted and has a building height of 46.66 feet, where 42 feet is permitted. As part of the additions proposed to the front facade, there's 155-square-foot addition to the front facade of the pre-existing, non-conforming fourth floor, thereby triggering a variance for number of stories and building height. The building height's also increased by .17 feet. This is not because the building itself is getting taller, This is not because the building itself is getting taller, but simply rather because the average grade plane around the building is being adjusted, which causes that slight adjustment to the height.
Next, the variances that relate to the roof terrace and appertinent structures on the roof. Can you describe those variances?
The area of the elevator and the stairs to access the roof is proposed to be 17 feet where 15 feet is permitted. Because of the structural reinforcement that is required to be able to construct the rooftop terrace in the first place, the original 1950 design and construction would not support a rooftop terrace as currently proposed, so additional structural support is required. Also, the total height of the building with the appertinent structures is permitted to be 50 feet. Because the existing building has a pre-existing non-conforming height, the addition of the appertinent structure exceeds the total height permitted by 13.83 feet. And then also lighting. Lighting is proposed for the rooftop terrace for safety purposes, and because the ordinance does not permit any lights to be mounted above 15 feet, any lighting on the roof will require a variance as well.
And the last variance is for the floor-area ratio. Can you describe that for the board?
Yes, the existing FAR is 299%, as we previously discussed. This application contemplates additions in the front of the building on each story to align the front facade of the building with the surrounding buildings and the streetscape, as well as a small second-story addition in the rear, which results in a proposed FAR of 349.6% or an additional 3,666 square feet over what is currently existing.
And with regard to signage, is there any signage proposed as part of this application? And if so, will it comply with the ordinance?
Yes, there are two signs proposed, one above the retail space and one on the canopy above the front lobby main entrance to the office space, and both will comply with all ordinance standards.
And can you go through for the board what is proposed for the trash and recycling collection?
Yes, there are currently six to eight hand-rolled trash bins at the back of the building that are used by the tenants. These bins are rolled out by hand by the trash hauler to the driveway that accesses the 475 Springfield Avenue parking, as we previously discussed, and then those bins are hand-loaded into the truck. We anticipate that that same arrangement will continue moving forward.
Was this application the subject of a TRC meeting?
It was. There was an informal TRC held with the zoning officer, the planner, the fire chief, and other staff and professionals, which I think we came away characterizing and is positive and productive.
And have there been any improvements or changes to the property since the date the plans were submitted in connection with this application?
There have not.
And did you retain any experts to help in the preparation and presentation of this application?
Yes, I think you mentioned them briefly before. Nick Sappasaris, civil engineer; Michael Sass, architect; Paul Phillips, planner; and Connor Hughes, our traffic engineer.
I don't have any more questions for this witness.
Impressively well-organized testimony, so kudos to whomever pulled that together. The only point of just clarification, and perhaps three of you are teasing this for us, is addressing any non-conforming conditions, notably the first-floor use today. I heard Mr. Jaeger mention an anticipated retail use for the first floor. Is that, how do we, could you just reiterate that for me or clarify that we're going to be removing a non-conforming first-floor use and anticipate replacing with something that's conforming?
I think that's right. Yeah, there's currently a medical use on the ground floor, front-facing Springfield Avenue, which is not currently permitted in the CRBD. We anticipate modifying and changing that tenancy to bring in what would be considered a permitted use within the zoning ordinance since today.
Do we know how many square feet retail will be there versus, you know, how wide is the main entrance? Is the main entrance a triple door and, you know, a five-foot retail space or what are we looking at?
Yeah, when the architect goes through the presentation and shows the rendering, you'll see, Joe, that it's split, let's say roughly 50/50, so it's a 50-foot-wide lot. So approximately 25 feet plus or minus would be dedicated to retail storefront. About 25 feet would be dedicated to the office lobby entrance. Right now, yeah, so the building, which again we'll get into when we start talking about floor plates and challenges in terms of laying this space out, the building is deep, 144 feet deep. So the retail tenancy could vary depending on the nature of the user, from anywhere from probably 1,300 or 1,400 square feet up to as much as potentially almost 3,000 square feet.
Questions for Mr. Jaeger?
Yep. Maybe you know this, maybe you don't. Do you know how many employees currently work in the building?
The building is largely nonoccupied right now.
I had a feeling, okay.
Is that a better way to say it? So I would say probably, but there's a doctor and a dentist between those, I'd say maybe eight, 10 employees at any given time. There's a software development firm, which is, remains largely remote. I'd say at any one time, there may be a third to 40% in occupancy, so maybe that's eight to 10 employees. And one whole floor is vacant, so the building is not very well occupied.
And if it were fully occupied, what would you guess number of employees?
Again, I would say for a typical downtown Summit use, typically if it's 200 square feet per person, could be as many as 50, 60 employees. I think that's probably on the heavy side. I don't know that the building's ever functioned or operated at that kind of a level, but the building would be able to sustain that, I think.
So then I guess maybe using the same ratio, if we approve this tonight and the building is built and it's then full, how many employees would that be using? Maybe that same ratio?
Same, 65, 70, perhaps. You know, we're only talking about another 3,600 square feet, plus or minus. I think if you applied, you know, four tenants per thousand on that, it's another 10, 12 employees potentially.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board for Mr. Jaeger? No? Are there professionals? Yes.
Just your clarifications. I heard you mention it, but I didn't write it down fast enough. You had one parking space dedicated to a neighbor, I believe, of ours?
Correct. Well, it's 467. It's the building to the east. I don't know the lot and block offhand yet, but it's, and that was a pre-existing arrangement that I inherited.
Okay. And then also, you were just mentioning in the discussion with the board that you may go less than 1,500. I just caution you, I think 1,500 is the minimum square footage if the rest is office on that first floor. There's a minimum requirement under the permitted use standard.
I knew that and I misspoke, so I apologize. I did, I apologize. Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Jaeger?
I am not sure if this is for Mr. Jaeger or maybe the civil engineer, but it's for the construction sequence, lay-down, and any obstructions, you know, for the neighbors during construction. How are you planning to alleviate that?
So clearly, as part of our construction permitting process, that will have to be discussed with the city professionals as well as the neighbors. I think we've always worked collaboratively in similar situations with very tight logistical sites with our neighbors, so we will certainly be engaging them to walk through and talk through how we can best do that between utilizing some parking spaces in the street. We know we have to build sidewalk enclosures for safety, and we'll go through all of that once we have all that fully developed and we understand exactly what our own sequencing will look like.
Okay. Are you planning on developing a narrative and a sequence and providing this to the city also?
I'm sure that the building part will absolutely require that, for sure.
Yeah, okay. That was it. Thank you.
Excellent. And I would just remind the board, as Mr. Jaeger's here, he's probably, will be able to best reflect the operational realities of the facility when it is in its full form. So I don't, there's no dog run on the roof thankfully here, but trash collection, for example, access and entry, anything else that may come to mind as part of the other testimony, we can recall Mr. Jaeger, and he'd be happy to answer those questions. Okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger.
Thank you.
I would like to call Mr. Sappasaris, the civil engineer, please.
Could raise your right hand? Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this matters the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name.
Nicholas Sappasaris.
Thank you. Have you appeared before our board previously?
I have, yes.
Any changes to your credentials since the last time you appeared?
No.
All right. License is still in good standing in New Jersey?
Yes.
Any question from the board, or would you like to accept them once again?
We'll accept them once again. Welcome back. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to make one point, that tonight, his testimony, although it's focused on civil engineering, he may also testify about certain issues that relate to architecture. And as such, I would ask if you could provide your credentials with regard to architecture for the board as well.
Sure. As I mentioned earlier, I've been a registered architect since 2000. I've been a professional engineer since 1992. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Worcester Polytechnic Institute, a Master of Science from Worcester Polytechnic Institute in Structural Engineering, and a Master of Science in Real Estate Development from MIT. The architectural part, again, has been since 2000 as a member of the AIA. But this evening, I'll be testifying primarily as a civil engineer.
And as an architect, are you licensed in New Jersey as well?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I would submit Mr. Sappasaris as an expert in the field of civil engineering and architecture.
We'll accept your credentials.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Can you explain the steps that you've taken to prepare to give your expert testimony in this application?
Yes, this pretty much began over 20 years ago. We've been the architects and engineers of record on this building since at least 2002. We've done about 18 tenant improvements in the building, both inside and out, so we know the building very well. That having been said, we did do a specific site inspection and investigation on this asset one more time before preparing these plans and specifications.
Okay, so I would submit that you have an adequate foundation upon which to project your expertise.
Yes.
Recognizing that the site is fully developed with an existing building, parking, and other improvements, did you prepare civil engineering plans in accordance with the requirements of the applicable city ordinances and the municipal and municipal?
Yes, and they were prepared under my supervision.
Using the plans that you've prepared and that were filed with the board, can you describe the site plan from a civil engineering perspective, please?
Yes, I'd like the board, if you will, to refer to drawing SP 101. I can turn to it on the right here. These drawings, specifically SP 101, is in your package. It's not a new exhibit. And in essence, the building is located in the CRBD, Central Retail Business District, and is surrounded by a mixture of uses, including retail, there's residential, and there is office.
And what is proposed?
As the developer testified to earlier, we are proposing to add office and retail on the front, so that it now becomes linear with the property line in the front. And in the rear, we're asking, we're proposing that the very high cantilever in the back gets lowered and that there's another addition in the back of office space.
Can you confirm if the curbing and sidewalks are to be replaced or to remove?
The sidewalks in front of the building are in fair condition. A lot of them are in good condition. But our note and our proposal would include repairing any damage that is done as a result of construction. There will be, as I'll testify to in a few minutes, a fire backflow preventer put in, so there will be some damage. The majority of sidewalks are in good condition today, but as part of this application, if it is approved, the sidewalks will be restored and repaired.
Perfect. And do you go through the parking and circulation generally?
Yes. So there are no changes proposed to the front in terms of access and circulation. There is an easement to the west of the building that goes to the back. And as it is today, there exist eight spaces there. As part of our design, we thought of the best way to sort of grade the area in the back and also design the parking so that it would comply with standards for clearance when we added the second floor to the space. So we are leaving the spaces as they are today, but improving the distance between them. So we're improving the distance to 23 feet. As they are today, the spaces were encroaching on an adjacent piece of property to the north, which was the cellar. Now that easement has, there's an easement that has been formalized to allow the vehicles to now rest on the adjacent property. And so therefore, now it is in full compliance with the easements and access, et cetera.
And the 23-foot aisle width, that's compliant with the ordinance?
Yes, it is.
Next, the stormwater management.
I'd like, if the board would like to go to SP 201, and the existing drainage conditions as well as the proposed drainage conditions are shown on that drawing. So over the past 20 years, I've had the personal, I've looked at the property personally in heavy rain, and as the engineer of record, we have never experienced any issues with drainage. The drainage consists of an inlet at the back, which then drains to the south with a 12-inch pipe. The roof leaders drain to that inlet. But just to be safe, since there's so much proposed in terms of renovation, we had every line videotaped, and I can confirm that the lines are in good condition and can continue to serve the building. So drainage existing to remain, and there have been no issues with it. And there's no substantial increase in impervious area, except for the small planter in the front, which is impervious from the roof to begin with.
And as part of this application, if it were to be approved, does the applicant agree as a condition of approval to comply with Paragraph 10A and B of the engineer's report?
Yes.
With regard to the existing and proposed grades, can you explain why no plan revisions are required as per the engineer's report 4A?
Yes. So if you were to look at SP 201 and look at the existing and proposed grades, they are the same. And it'll take a minute for me to sort of explain what's going on. The sidewalk on the front property line is not changing, except for a very little bit at the entrances of the doors, so that the door is flat. The grades at the back are not changing. In fact, we're milling the parking lot, so it's at the same elevation. So there is no change in elevation, but what happens is when the existing grades are measured per your ordinance, we took 18 points to get the average grade, but the average grade is in the alcove in the front, which is a little bit higher. So that when you run the math again with the facade proposed at the front, the grade increases by 0.17 feet. So it's a mathematical computation that causes that, but it's not anything to do with substantial grading. In fact, we've tried and I think have succeeded in keeping the grades where they are, so that we don't impair anybody else's property. There were other solutions that we looked at, which included more intense grading, but we decided against it.
And with regard to the utilities?
So, beginning with water, and again, this is continuing on SP 201. Water is sufficient in its current form. The uses are similar, and the lines are fine. Wastewater, we also taped and videoed the existing 6-inch line and can report back that it is in good condition and can remain. The electric existing is 1,200 amps at 120 over 208, which is more than adequate for the existing and the proposed uses. And most importantly, as the architect will testify to shortly, the fire protection is being substantially improved. We were involved in minor fire protection and sprinkler work here over the years, but I can report that the building is not sprinkled in its entirety. The utility and the fire line is being put in as brand-new to accommodate a brand-new sprinkler system, and so the fire protection line is inadequate right now, but will be, if the application is approved, brand-new. And furthermore, it's not just going to be a fire line, but it will have a new dedicated backflow preventer, check valve, shut-off valves, and this will go in the front of the building, in the sidewalk, underground.
Soil erosion?
There's very little soil erosion here, but we did take the precaution and prepared a soil erosion and sediment control plan that will have filter fabric and protection to the existing trees, front and back.
And does the applicant agree as a condition of approval to revise the plan to show the limit of disturbance and erosion and sediment control measures as referenced in the engineer's report at Paragraph 16A, B, and C?
Yes.
And then the demolition plan?
So demolition is interesting. It's basically the obsolete planters in the front. You can see on the photograph on the far left, all of that is being proposed to be removed. There's a tree on the right, which is overgrown, and on the right-hand side, the planter and some hardscape in the front is being demolished. That's primarily the demolition plan.
The engineer's report at Paragraph 15 states that on the proposed site demolition plan, the applicant has noted to demolish and dispose of existing landscape planters. There is also an existing tree in the location that is assumed to be removed as part of the project. The applicant shall provide testimony and revise the plans accordingly. Do you, does the applicant agree to revise the plans in accordance with that paragraph as a condition of approval?
Yes.
And the tree protection?
On drawing SP 401, we've included standard details on how to protect the trees. We didn't stop at the trees in front of the property. We proposed that a tree to the east and a tree to the west also be included. So yes, we do have details on how to protect the trees. They include orange fence and chain link fence.
I believe that in the foresters' report, he had mentioned the tree protection. Does the applicant agree as a condition of approval to comply with the foresters' report?
Yes.
On the detail sheet?
Yes, SP 401. That sheet contains the details regarding the dumpster enclosure, which will be a cedar slat fence. The refuse is there at this time, and it's been functioning well over the past 20 years, so we don't propose anything other than cleaning it up and enclosing it. We've also run some calculations to confirm that upon renovation, that the number of bins that exist are sufficient. So we had 1,500, we ran 1,500 square feet of retail, which generated two and a half pounds per 100 square feet per day. The 24,000 square feet of office at one pound per 100 generated 100, one pound per 100 per day. And so that's a total of 280 pounds or 2.8 yards. In summary, if it's fully occupied for the proposed uses, it'll be a daily pickup. And the way it works is that there's, they're all kind of drums on wheels, and that's, they've just been taking them out as, as needed.
And if this area is blocked by a vehicle that is parked adjacent to those, that trash and recycling enclosure, will people still be able to access it and roll the bins out?
Yes, you can put a door to the north of the enclosure.
Lighting?
So lighting is also on SP 401. And there was, I apologize, an error in the count. The, your professionals realize that. We are proposing 11 two-by-two lay-in fixtures at the back of the building. It'll be more like a drop ceiling, and there'll be two-by-two light fixtures in the back, and that'll be over the parking. The lighting itself will be in compliance with your ordinance. We have an average of 1.3-foot candles, minimum at the prop, and a minimum, and at the property line, 0.1. But the architect will further expand on this. It's not your typical site lighting plan that a civil engineer will talk about in the parking lot. It's more about the architecture. The lighting is, is more architectural lighting than it is civil engineering at this point. But he'll be prepared to testify on the numbers also, if necessary.
And recognizing, as you just stated, that the architect will be testifying with regard to the lighting, can you confirm that the plans will be updated to include rooftop lighting proposed? As a condition of approval, the, the plans will be revised and resubmitted to show the rooftop lighting that's proposed?
Yes.
And is there any proposed lighting on the building facade? Building facade?
There is safety lighting for the entrances.
And what about with regard to the canopy?
Yes.
The awning in the front?
We are proposing that the entrances be lit for safety, yes.
And does that comply with the ordinance?
Yes.
And so any lighting that's not shown but proposed will be reflected on revised plans with lighting details as a condition of approval?
Yes.
And can you just go over again for the board, the existing height of the building, the proposed height of the building, and explain the reason for the increase?
Sure. If the board would like, you can turn to sheet A 201. And on that drawing in the middle, you'll see that the existing height is 46.66 from average grade at the perimeter, and that's a number that we computed. And the proposed, the proposed is 46.83. In essence, we're adding a few feet for structure, as the developer mentioned before. And just to be clear about what we're doing, the rooftop area couldn't really go on the existing structure, because it is supposed to be designed for a higher weight. So all, much like you would an HVAC unit, we're just proposing four stubs that come up, almost like dunage, and building a little bit of a platform free of the existing structure in the, in the, in the ceiling there, in the, in the roof structure, so that it's independent and does not in any way affect the structure and the roof of the underlying building. And so that's why we needed an extra two feet for that structure. It's not as if the building is getting, the building per se is getting higher, higher from an architectural perspective.
And with regard to the 46.83 feet, that's just basically technical in nature, because the grade is changing?
Exactly.
And what appurtenances are proposed?
The rooftop area is going to be handicap accessible, and so the elevator has to go up into that area, and that requires the seven, the seven, the extra height, the 17 feet. Again, the architect will testify as to the technical reasons why that is required, but the elevator bulkhead has to go up above the top of the roof, and that is permitted. We are asking for, I believe, another, your ordinance permits, it's 42 feet plus eight, and we are above that to 60, let me get that number. It's 14.83 of clear in the bulkhead. But again, I would prefer that the architect testifies to the reasons for that height.
So the overall height, just to clarify, though, it will be 63.83 feet?
63.83, where 50 is permitted. I believe that the zoning officer also had something where it was 57, but that's not, I believe, accurate, correct?
Correct. And with regard to the mechanical equipment that's proposed for the roof?
There is new HVAC packaged rooftop units and an existing generator that will remain.
And is the location, height, and screening for this mechanical equipment compliant with the ordinance?
Yes, and the architect will further describe the treatment to enclose the HVAC units.
And with regard to the AC units and the generators, the zoning officer had mentioned section 14.1 J4F, which actually has to do with residential exterior mechanical equipment and the timing for the testing of that. But does the applicant agree to comply with that as a condition of approval?
Yes.
And does the applicant agree as a condition of approval to comply? Oh, sorry, I just said that. Turning to the administrative reviews, you've already touched upon most of the comments. However, with regard to the last few that have not been mentioned, if you could refer to the engineer's report dated March 22, 2023, and can you go through item 13 for the board, please?
Yes. So item 13 talks about which standards we would be using for some of the civil engineering elements, such as curbing and pavement. I've referred to all three, including city, county, and NJDOT. And the reason for that is because this particular part of Springfield Avenue is in the city's jurisdiction, but there's county pavement, and county pavement refers to NJDOT standards. So to be safe and subject to your engineer's approval, if it is approved, we will pick the right standard. But in my professional opinion, I think because it's a county road, the county paving standard should apply when we're digging it up. There's a nice Belgium block curb, which is your city standard, which should be preserved. And again, pavement refers to NJDOT. So all three apply, but we're going to have to be selective as to which one later, and I think that that would also be subject to final engineering review. But all three standards we've indicated on the drawings.
With regard to items 19 through 23, does the applicant agree as a condition of approval to comply with those items?
Yes.
Before we turn to the fire chief and construction officials' review, did you or somebody from your office meet with the construction official and a representative from the fire department to go over what is proposed in this application?
We did. I met on February 18th, 14th, I apologize, with one of my partners, Robert Brengia, and the fire code official, Mr. Michello, the code official, to discuss something that was important, which is the existing windows to remain. So the reason that we met is to confirm that the existing windows can remain. There's a fire protection system on the windows on the upper floors at the back. However, the proposed windows have to comply with all current codes, and we were told and agree that no variation would be granted on any new windows. And to that, we agreed. And I believe we, we've confirmed that afterwards, after that meeting. And so in summary, we would agree entirely with the code official's comment letter.
And if you could just go through both of those reports one at a time and respond, respond to them.
Okay. So the first one is from Ralph Martado, and he's the construction code official. The second page is really where the majority of his comments were. And in the first paragraph after the requirements, there is, quote, "A variation will not be granted, period. The new addition must comply with current building codes." Specifically, that is for the new windows, and we are willing to put fire-rated windows, which are the same as having a wall. So it's a different type of glass, and so on the addition, that type of window would be installed at the rear, okay? And in the second paragraph, "Plans must comply with all current building codes for the existing building and new addition," which we agree. And that, of course, incorporates the New Jersey Rehabilitation Subcode, and we would comply with that. And finally, "The design professional should show in detail a code analysis on how they will meet the code requirements for the existing building and the new addition. If the application is approved, we will then proceed to construction drawings, but our office has already looked at these issues, and we are confident that there will be no surprises." The only one that we were concerned about, again, was the one about the windows, and we had a very good meeting, again, with your construction code official and fire, fire officials. On the second...
Oh, can I just interrupt you?
Yes.
Sorry. So does the applicant agree to comply with this report as a condition of approval?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. The other report is the March 8, 2023, report from the fire chief, Eric Evers. And there is a comment where there is some concern about bringing the property so close to the property line by filling it, quote, "By filling it with a building 0.1 and 0.6 to multiple lot lines, it will create a public and fire safety concern." I go back to one of the comments I made earlier, that the building is currently only partially sprinkled right now. And so our proposal includes an entirely new and updated, modern sprinkler system. I also feel that by bringing the building to a zero lot line and not having this alcove any further, access to the building is easier and safer from the street. At the rear of the property, we're maintaining, maintaining an existing fire curtain. If anybody's ever seen the, the back of the building, or you can see on one of our photographs, there's these little fire sprinkler heads that are at the back already. So we'll not only maintain those, but we've discussed perhaps doing something on the inside, too. So I think that with the benefit of full construction drawings, that his comments could be addressed.
So to be clear, as a condition of, the applicant would agree to a condition of approval to comply with that final paragraph of the fire chief's review?
Yes.
Just technically, you indicated this was a March 8 report. I believe it's March 22nd.
Yes. No, the comments were due March 22nd.
By the fire chief signed it dated March 22nd.
Signed it on March 22nd, which is significantly after your meeting with him, which seems to indicate to me a difference in opinion between the fire chief and you.
I read the top of the...
No, I know you did. I understood that. But we're talking about March 22nd, his report versus you telling us that it was dealt with on February 14th.
Did you have clarifying conversations, or did somebody from your office have a clarifying conversation with the fire chief and construction official with regard to the reports after your initial meeting?
With, with the code official, not the fire official. With the code official, not the fire official.
But I believe I heard the applicant's attorney say, "The applicant is agreeing to comply with, with the final paragraph of the fire chief's report."
I don't have any more questions.
And then just as a matter of practice for the board, we would probably ask the applicant to accept the engineer's letter as a whole, without any objection to that?
Nope, that's really fine. I figured that, I just thought I would go through it.
Very thorough, no? For sure. And Dipsey maybe will give you the opportunity then first to just jump in. Is there any other points of emphasis that you want to call attention to?
It was very thorough, so thank you for going through that. Yeah, the conditions were met. I mean, there's just one small detail regarding the existing and proposed grading. Some of the grading are, you've mentioned that it's existing and proposed, haven't major changes between them, but some of the grading has been blocked off in like rectangular. So we just want, we just want a clarification on that current.
Sure. The reason that we did it that way is because it's so flat, that if we put regular contours, you wouldn't be able to see it. So whenever it's really flat, I choose to do a box on a proposed grade and no box around existing grade. But I can certainly blow it up
Okay.
in the front, if necessary, and make it clear, so...
Either way, or sometimes we screen the existing grades, or, you know, remove them if they're not necessary. As, as you wish. I just wanted to make sure there was an understanding that the boxed-out ones were actually the proposed.
Proposed, correct. That is, that is the case.
Just next, Eddie, you'd like to, just two points of clarification. One regarding the easements. Will there be any changes to the existing easements as a result of what's proposed?
The easements were changed in advance.
In advance, okay.
In advance. So the developer did file, finish the easement in the back, which allows the cars to be where they are today.
Right.
Correct. And he also negotiated an easement to allow the reduction in the, from the 18 feet to we have now a shorter distance underneath. So all of that is papered up, if you will.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify the building height, and this is only just for the purposes of the record, to make sure. Regarding the existing to proposed building height, you have the 46.66, and you go into 46.83. You indicated there might be some dunage on the roof in order to create that upper level outdoor area. Did I understand that correctly?
Yes.
Will that add to the building height as a result? I just want to make sure you're covered in order for when you get to final construction drawings, should the board approve.
I might hold off for the architect to...
Yeah, I have a question for the architect. It just occurred to me as you talked about the elevator and things of that nature. I didn't know, in fact, if, in fact, there's any reason to that upper roof elevation or not as a result.
The elevation of the roof will remain. We're not proposing that the existing roof where it stands is, is going to change at all.
Oh, okay.
There'll be four posts that can up, come up just for the, the place where people are able to enjoy the roof.
Okay.
So that, and that's a limited area of the roof.
Okay.
But the actual floor heights, the roof itself stays, and roofing will stay.
So the roof's surface will not be ripped?
Correct.
Such as they do on some buildings, where they do a green roof, and they'll rip the roof.
Exactly correct. This will be dunage. To make it simple, four posts come up, the steel goes in, and it's almost like a, a and it's almost like a deck of somebody's house, if you will. Let's, let's in the back.
That's perfect. The architect can cover that. That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe before I open it to board questions real quick, maybe Andy and I were just discussing briefly. There are a number of conditions the applicant suggested that they would conform with. For the purpose of the resolution, I was out of my peripheral vision not seeing Andy capture 25, 30, 40, 50 conditions. How should we treat, especially with respect to the fire and the construction? How should the board just understand how those points are being addressed with respect to the resolution or potentially steps further along in the review process?
So, I think the majority of them were particular paragraphs in the board engineers memorandum already. So, that's our usual compliance with all the conditions noted in there unless it's specifically called out. Otherwise, I do think, you know, normally, we wouldn't condition it on acceptance of every report. But there were a few that were offered with a few particulars that, especially for the sake of safety and those sorts of issues. So, I did note down that compliance with the construction official's report and compliance with the fire chief's report would be particular conditions noted in the resolution of approval.
The only other one would have been from the zoning officer's report with regard to the timing of testing of the mechanical equipment.
That's established in the DRO. So, yes.
Although it doesn't apply to this property. Technically, that section applied to residential mechanical equipment. So.
We will note that one as well. I did also have one more that I missed. The city forester, you offered to comply with those conditions in the memorandum. So, that one, that as well.
Questions then from the board?
I have a question. It might be better for the architect. But you have noted a proposed clear glass railing atop the building. I suppose that is around the edge of the decking. That is the terrace area. But it is set back from the edge of the building. How far back is it?
Better that he testifies.
Okay, that's fine. I'll wait for the architect.
10 or 15 feet, but let him give you the exact number. And he has a sketch of the board.
Questions from the side?
Is there any vegetation on the rooftop?
Yes.
And how does that fit in? Does there a plan for that?
Yes.
How does that fit in with what the forester has asked?
Our architect has a plan of all vegetation.
And as long as you've already testified as an architect, we have a report from the Historic Preservation Committee that's not in favor of this because it doesn't meet the historical issues. Any comments on that?
Yes. I guess I can comment as a longtime member of the Village of Bridgewood Historic Preservation Commission. We struggled with this one also of what the right answer would be for this facade. And he'll testify to it in more detail, but I was involved. It's my name on the drawing. And the primary reasons for it were, as the developer testified and as I realized for 20 years, when I would see a tenant walk out of this building and the reasons that they walked out are just as important as, as what's wrong with it. And too many people walked out. In fact, without sort of spoiling what you're going to hear from Michael, they're taking massive steps to move an elevator and move major parts of the building out of the way so that you can get some outside awareness. We were taught, I studied engineering, but I've been around a lot of architects and the importance of having an employee sit, I think we're at 55 feet from an alcove, a concave alcove right now is not a happy spot. So, in summary, we went through a lot of 18 tenant improvements trying to get them light. And he'll also testify that this particular building doesn't have it except for the beginning and the end. So, to compress, to make them smaller and to sort of go to a more traditional facade would have made it extremely difficult inside. So, it was, it was a tough thing. I don't want to, again, I'm summarizing for it. It was my final sort of signature after, of course, the developer took us in this direction. But that's, that's where we are. And again, the bottom is, does have masonry. It does have some substance. There's a, there's a bottom. There's a middle and there's a top. We've gone around the building. We're re-stuccoing the whole back of it. But again, it was a hard problem to solve.
I could just interrupt. I'm sorry. The architect will go through on how it meets the design guidelines and the ordinance and the master plan and the CRVD master plan.
I just thought, because he was certified as an architect with his opinion as well.
Before you do so, did, were there any elements in terms of the engineering material choice, for example, that did prevent the acceptance of a more traditional facade or whatever other elements may be reflected?
If I were told to make it out of masonry, I could do it. But the lightness and the structural connectivity, if you will, of the existing steel structure makes this a much easier marriage. I think that, again, we could have, nobody, I cannot tell you that masonry, an entirely masonry facade is not possible. It is possible, right?
Any questions from the board? Note also, there are no members of the interested public that have come in. We're about an hour fifteen in. Anyone care to take a break? Or we'll continue to the next witness?
I'd like to call Michael Sasse, the architect.
We have some room for Ms. Olson there.
Now, everybody's going to be staring over here.
You can raise your right hand. Do you swear a firm testimony you're about to give in this matter? Is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Please state your name and spell your last name.
My name is Michael. Last name is Sasse. S.A.S.
Thank you. And have you appeared before this board?
I have appeared before the planning board in city.
Okay. Can you just briefly describe your background, experience, and three boards you've appeared before recently?
I'm a registered architect in the state of New Jersey, state of Washington, and nationally accredited. Have a bachelor's degree in architecture from Pratt Institute in Brooklyn. And I've appeared before Mithlin Park, City Summit's Planning Board, Bridgewood Historic Preservation Commission, among other boards, and provided expert testimony for a field of architecture.
Questions from the board? Or would you like to accept his credentials?
My knowledge, our first bi-coastal architect. We welcome you and will accept your credentials.
Can you just explain the steps that you took to prepare yourself to give testimony this evening?
I've been working in this building for over a decade, doing tenant improvements, meeting with the tenants, doing a lot of interior retrofits to the building. Very familiar with the core elements, the setbacks, the limitations of the structure, limitations of the design and the elements of the building. Hopped a lot of ceiling tiles and walked that building significantly.
Perfect. And can you describe for the board the existing building referring to the exhibits that were previously marked as A1 and A2?
Absolutely. I'd qualify this building as a mid-century modern kind of troubled building. It's typically mid-century modern. You'd find a lot more glass. This one is masonry, so they have just punched openings. So, the setbacks of the design kind of are conducive to that mid-century design. But in this case, because of those setbacks and those alcoves, it creates cavernous situations, poor lighting on the inside. The layout of the building, we're going to tour. Show you exhibit. Exhibit 3, 2A, 201.
Yes, A3.
A3. So, you can see the line of the building has a lot of jogs and undulations in it. The center core has, is kind of offset to the middle. We have the bathrooms in the middle that are blocking through light penetration. And then, the common corridors just arranged in a poor manner to open up a floor plate for a potential tenant.
And would you mind just going to A2 and showing the back of the building?
So, you'll see in the bottom right image that the building sets back significantly on that second floor. It creates a lot of dark office space. You have small punch windows along the back. And then, above that is a sprinkler head that was been previously referenced and testified to. That's the water curtain for the fire protection system. There's limitations to this. It has very limited light, very limited daylight opportunities for any tenant in this building.
What was the objective of the project given to you by the applicant?
We want to modernize the building, provide a nice open floor plate for any potential tenant, potentially a whole user on the building or individual tenants per floor. Provide that retail space on the front, bring that streetscape forward and provide a more pedestrian, safe environment for people walking on the street and more scale to that building instead of having a building overhanging you as you walk down the street, something that is more inviting in the presence of the occupants and users of the street.
And can you explain to the board some of the architectural challenges the existing building presented?
As previously testified, the depth of this building and that undulation in the front facade, those cavernous steps, that overhanging element on the fourth floor, it just creates dark spaces and we want to bring natural light into the building. So, part of that design intent is to bring glass to that facade, get daylight, get outdoor awareness for those tenants and allow people to be comfortable in their environment instead of feeling like they're sitting in a basement. I mean, COVID is a prime example of people using their basement and they no longer want to be there.
And have you prepared a rendering of the front elevation facing Springfield Avenue? And does it represent the look and materials the applicant intends to construct?
Yes, we prepared this front elevation. I believe we need to bring that into exhibit A4, which is the Springfield Avenue frontage and rendering of the building.
So, using A4, can you describe the materials and colors to be used for the proposed building? And also, explain to the board how the architectural choices made for this renovation meet the given objectives and overcome the challenges of the existing building?
So, we reviewed the development regulations and there's a lot of context of scale and, you know, horizontal elements to the building. So, we took an approach of kind of a palazzo design where we have these different tiers. This first floor, first tier, which is the foundation, the grounding of that building. You'll see that with the limestone and the retail element to the right. And then, we have the second tier, which is in a palazzo design. It's lighter, airier, and it brings natural light into that, that building. So, in that, in this situation, we used glass. And then, with that same style of architecture, we capped it off with that horizontal band and then that cap on the building. Again, bringing that glass up to keep that natural light and air and openness to the building. So, it kind of has that three-tiered approach. On the side of the building, we have the brick. It's charcoal brick and we would bring that down to the front entrance of the office. So, we have a distinguished office space and retail space. As you can see, the retail takes about two-thirds of that frontage. The office is about one-third of that frontage. So, we would have about 1,500 square feet of retail space.
And you can, you can see this? I just want to make sure the board, the members can see it. I can just about see it. Go ahead. Okay.
I can.
Summit's palazzo.
Would you like me to?
Excellent. Will the materials and architectural style carry around to the side and rear of the building?
The horizontal articulation on the top and the, the top bands will continue around. We have that horizontal band on the glazing, which is a spandrel glass. Unfortunately, that deadens into a building. But the brick will also continue around in the back. So, we'll have those horizontal elements. I can actually show that with the roof terrace rendering. If you don't mind me bringing that into exhibit.
You know what? If we just hold off for one second on that one. And then, can you just talk about the building mounted lighting?
So, we would have canopy lighting underneath the front canopy. The retail tenant would be subject to what, how they would feature their, their retail elements and light their sign as per the ordinance.
And just to confirm, the signage and all of the lighting except for all the rooftop comply with the ordinance?
That's correct. It does comply.
Okay. And then, if you could just kind of go through the windows and any treatments that are proposed?
So, I'm going to take us to a floor plan, A1 and 2, which will be our second floor. And this is our proposed second floor floor plan. And just bringing it up for reference to show you how deep this building is, how long it is, the limitations we have in the back with the small pocket windows. So, really, our daylight opportunity on the second and third floor is from that front facade. And so, in order to get that outdoor awareness and, and make a tenant feel comfortable in that space, it does provide that natural light by having more glass and a little bit more awareness from a further distance.
Okay. And then, the exterior of the front facade on a cloudy winter day, I believe, was referenced by the zoning officer. Can you just explain that?
Yes. So, I'm assuming that reference goes to, it's going to be cloudy. Lights are going to be on in this building. She's afraid that this thing is going to glow or create, you know, some sort of light box effect. In this case, we, energy code requires us to use a low E glass. It has some reflectivity to it. So, it's more of the case that you'll see the sky or the opposite building than the building glowing from inside.
And in response to the administrative reports, did you prepare a line of sight exhibit that will show what will be seen from Springfield Avenue looking into the proposed building?
Yes, we did.
That could be marked as A5. And can you describe A5 to the board with specific reference to the zoning officer and planner's comments relating to visual impact of the windows on Springfield Avenue?
The, I believe the concern was the visual impact of somebody standing opposite of the street and being able to see a potential desk or worker sitting at a desk from that point of view. Because if you're under the building, you won't have that perspective. The further away you are, the better your line of sight is. So, we use the opposite side of the street standing up against 466 to the furthest distance away. So, the line of sight to the second floor will give you a little bit of a view into that space. Our, in our consideration, we consider the desk back on the window, four feet. In an open floor plate, a typical tenant would want circulation around that building. They're not going to butt them up into a window space. So, in that situation, on the second floor, you would not see that desk environment. And as you go further up, that view gets limited. So, that lower window, even though it is low up against the glass, you just won't see anything beyond, you know, a desk mask or garbage or anything along those lines.
And again, if you could just go back to the lighting and any potential glow that might come from those windows?
So, we would have typical, the new energy code requires a motion sensor light to go in place. So, the occupant hours are typically between 8:00 and 6:00 p.m. And those lights would be on during those hours. After that time, you would have night lighting, which would be around the core and egress elements around the stair and the elevator and would be far enough back into that space that it won't have that glow effect on the front.
So, the lights will be automatic. So, if a cleaning person comes in and turns the lights on and forgets to turn them off, they're not going to be shining.
That's correct.
They're still out there all night long. Excellent. And can you explain to the board how the architectural choices for the building address the design guidelines outlined in the DRO and the objectives of the master plan, REX report and CRVD master plan?
So, we had a little bit of relief with that horizontal spandrel glass. The development regulations state to have concrete, brick, or wood horizontal elements tying in the building. So, on that second floor, we have a little bit of glass elements. But on that first separated, first floor separation, second floor separation and roof separation, we have that horizontal band to break that up. We also have the vertical elements to have the mullions. The building's not that wide. We have 50 feet of frontage. So, a horizontal element flanking either side with a brick would be sufficient to give you that visual relief.
And in your opinion, does the proposed building complement and enhance the surrounding building, streetscape and the summit downtown in general?
In my opinion, the, the building does complement. There are, the first floor retail has that limestone foundational element. It has the natural brick materials. We just have incorporated some glass to give a little bit of a troubled building some light and air.
And then, using the plans prepared. And then, using the plans prepared and filed with the board, can you go through the existing and proposed floor plans?
Go back to the existing floor plans, Exhibit A3.
Yes.
And as you can see, you have the purple elements, which are the existing egress stairs. This open space is the elevator. You have a building core of the bathrooms at the center. That's also where the existing HVT units are, electrical, all that power runs up that center core. In our proposed design, we reference A101 in your package. This is part of the, the plan submission. We will now relocate that elevator forward to the building, so it has more presence from the streetscape, and you know where that lobby entrance is. We're bringing that bathrooms to the side to open up the floor plate, to get that visibility and improve that light and air that we've been talking about, so that that person sitting 55, 60 feet away can still have that outdoor awareness.
And just to be clear, there is no basement?
There is no basement.
Okay. And then, with regard to the roof plan, did you prepare updated roof plan to incorporate the lighting proposed?
Yes, we have a lighting rendering and roof rendering, and we also have a three-dimensional rendering for the building. So I can bring those up.
So the rendering we can mark as A6. And the proposed roof plan, A7. Can you describe these two exhibits for the board?
A6 is a three-dimensional rendering of the roof terrace. Our intent of the design, which is a teak or hardwood deck on top of roof donage with a perimeter glass railing. I would incorporate some succulent plantings, green rooftop area planters, other native plants to the region that are drought-resistant because they're on the roof. So, as well as some other furniture, we also have the elevator and the stair coming up to access and make that roof deck accessible to all tenants and all users. And the rendering also shows mechanical screening, which I will get into a little bit further. On this rendering, A5? A5, we show a plan of that same visual reference.
No, this one?
I'm sorry?
Sorry, is A7.
A7, I apologize. A7 is a floor plan rendering. One is during the daytime and one is at nighttime. Our intent is to use a step light, which is just a low-profile downlight that has no glare, shielded, mounted to planters or furniture on the deck. This is also represents some of the plants that we're going to use, briegrass or prairie grass, some succulent plants, drought-resistant shrubbery, there's, you know, red maple is one option. They limit size depending on the planters, and we would want to keep that limited height to, so it's not visible from the street.
And how many lights are proposed?
We're proposing 12 small step lights on the, on the roof, and then we would also have emergency lights that are not shown because it's above, but you would have canopy lights at the elevator and at the stair.
Does that lighting plan anticipate use of the space in later, early evening, late afternoon, or is anticipate use into the evening? And this may be an operational question for Mr. Jaeger to reflect upon, but...
I would defer to Mr. Jaeger regarding any use of that in hours of operation, but I would anticipate that any deck would be more of a spring/summer when your daylight hours are a little bit longer, and site lighting is not as critical in the longer hours.
In your opinion, or Mr. Jaeger can certainly speak on behalf of the application, is, does this lighting provide for safe use in late hours, say after 6 o'clock, 7, 8 o'clock at night?
It will provide for one-foot candle, which is a walkway pattern, or walkway illumination on that roof terrace. So we would get one-foot candle around on average, and we won't want any more than 0.1 foot candles exceeding that property line. So we would stay within the ordinance requirements of a commercial walkway.
And then, just, just to kind of layer into the use of the space, does it anticipate, I mean, I see some couches, seating, what have you. I'll say it, you don't have to say it. Is there space for a bar, or some kind of drink, or food or beverage service, or...
We designed it right now as a flexible space, so you can divide it as multiple tenants. The intent would be, there's a number of paver options where you can integrate movable planters that can kind of adjust and make that space flexible. Again, at the discretion of the tenant, I would defer to operations and how they would want to use the space, but it would be for celebrations, breaks, or other use of an office, typical office tenant.
We'll have to have Mr. Jaeger come up a little bit later and reflect on that.
Okay.
Looks like a fun place.
And then, can you just go through, again, the mechanical equipment and the screening?
So we would have rooftop units, packaged rooftop units for the tenant. They would have a main shaftway for the duct down to each floor and distribution onto the tenants. We would approximate that there are six of those in that screened enclosure, basically two, one per each zone on each floor, and then probably doubling down on one of them for the, the first floor. Also in that enclosure would be the existing generator, and those are all on donage. The screening would be a sound barrier with a color to match, the mullions, which is a charcoal black color, and would meet all ordinance requirements.
And then, if you could just go through the, I guess, the elevator structure, and just explain the need for the increase in height, or 17 feet?
I will actually... Front elevation is the best option. So detail number one on A201 shows the elevator extending above the roof. Typical hydraulic elevator requires 14 feet, 10 inches of clear overhead space from the top floor, so this elevator is intended to go to that roof. So we would need 14 feet, 10 inches minimum to get that clear height and service that elevator. We're proposing that this deck gets built about two feet above the existing roof, so as an accessory structure on that roof. It would be two feet above, therefore, with a two-inch buffer of finishes and construction error, we went to 17 feet.
Does the 3D rendering fairly represent the...
It fairly represents the height of, and intent of it. And so I would actually like to take you back to the line of sight.
If you could just say how far back that's pushed back from the front of the building?
So, we're pushed back from the front of the building, almost 19 feet. So we have eight feet to the edge of the railing, and then another 10, almost 11 feet to the elevator shaft.
Go back to sightline, yeah, just real quick.
So, in the sightline, the person standing across the street will just catch the top three feet of that elevator shaftway.
How tall is that person?
That person is six feet, a line of sight, five, five foot eight.
So, can I ask a question before I forget? So, on the 3D rendering of the new building, that little piece sitting up on the left there, that's the top of the elevator shaft?
Correct.
So is this approximating a look of a six-foot-tall person from across the street?
This is approximating a little bit higher than a six-foot-tall person. We go about 12 feet, so your line of sight would be a little bit different in this situation.
Okay.
Can you also just explain the railing around the rooftop?
The intent would be a transparent railing to try and hide that visibility. So it's a glass railing with just a metal top, so that that does not create some sort of visual impairment. So you will actually see, as you can see from the front elevation here, that the railing will be just slightly visible from the street as well, because, and just being transparent, it will hopefully be able to look past it.
And how far is that pushed back from the front of the building?
That varies in depth. So we start at approximately seven feet, two inches on the western side of the property, and we narrow down to approximately 16, or 18 inches on the eastern side of the property.
Thank you. And now, can you explain to the board the FAR calculations for the renovated building?
So our FAR calculations consider the entire floor plate. We've broken it down into different uses, but it will calculate the entire floor plate excluding the elevator as per sub-note Q on the schedule table, which permits us to omit those elevators. If we need to calculate that in, we would have an increase of, if you'll excuse me, I have to find my note, 813 square feet. So if that sub-note is not considered, we would have another 813 square feet, or 360.6%. So in this situation, we have, we're proposing 1,568 square feet of retail, which is on this eastern portion, about two-thirds of the space, with professional office in the back. We reduce our common area with circulation and bringing that elevator in the front and opening up onto the floor plate. The staircases will remain the same, and same with the utility room. So our increase is primarily in providing that retail compliant use.
And I know that we touched upon it before, but is there signage proposed as part of this application?
Yes.
Is that huge tenant signage to scale, or...
Yeah, so, drawing A201 in your package shows the proposed signage. We don't have a tenant yet, so it's generic in nature, but is compliant with the applicable ordinances. Same with the awning sign or the canopy sign. Our hope is that we get a single user that occupies the building, but in the event that that could just be a building name instead of a tenant name. But again, would be within the parameters of the, of the ordinance.
And there's lighting proposed in the awning?
Correct. We would have high-hat lighting just for safety and security at that front entrance.
And that complies with the ordinance?
That will comply with the ordinance.
And from an architectural perspective, can the site accommodate the height and FAR proposed for the renovated building?
In my opinion, the, the site is more than capable of it. Currently, we have a four-story building that has this projection overhang that just is visually unappealing. It creates a cavernous situation. We're just infilling that void. We want to bring that up to the front, make it a little bit more pedestrian-friendly with a little bit of a retail element, and bringing that canopy in. So, opposite of us at 466, we have a four-story building. Granted, that second, that fourth floor is set back, but has similar height relations as well as a municipal parking lot just opposite and behind that. So, as you can see, the building to the left, the three-story structure is of similar height, so I think this infill is more than suitable for this property.
And have you reviewed the administrative comments prepared by the city's professionals?
Yes, I have.
And although the civil engineer in his testimony responded to the fire chief and the construction officials' reports, which the applicant has agreed to comply with, is there anything additional based on your architectural expertise that you would like to add to his response?
I think the only thing I could note is, in the construction code official's letter, I think reiterates our, the board's engineer, is a safety plan would need to be submitted as part of the permitting process, so we would comply with that regulation.
And the FAN report, the environmental commission report, can you respond to the comments in that report?
Absolutely. Our roof planting, they would like native plants to be planted on the roof terrace where possible, so our roof terrace would consist of native drought-resistant plants to be consistent. I believe he references the Princeton Plant List, which I have reviewed and have no problem complying with it.
Excellent. Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
It's Mr. Schnekes first, maybe, I ask.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few questions. Regarding the architectural detailing, and you heard it discussed earlier regarding the historic preservation commission's comments, and it relates to the development regulations that are identified in 3514.5. In this building, the width of the building is about 50 feet. Is that right?
Correct.
In the standards, it talks about vertical articulations no greater than 30 feet apart. If you were to consider that kind of a regiment of possibly columns or break in the facades detailing, what would that do to the overall detailing of the building? Is there a reason why what you're proposing is better than what is called for in the design regulations?
Yeah, we, one of our mockups with Mr. Jaeger, we did have a vertical element that did have that break, and we felt that it was an obstruction for that tenant on that floor, and it didn't create that view and that openness that we were trying to achieve with that tenant. And the depth of that building, or the existing building, the full glass, we feel is the right approach in this building.
And if you did do some sort of center column to that elevation, it likely wouldn't line up with your tenant space.
No, it would not. It would have to be offset, and again, that two-thirds, one-third relationship, and again, breaks the symmetry and balance of that building on the upper floors. We felt it would kind of justify us to one side and create an asymmetrical situation, where we feel the, the style of architecture conducive to the city of Summit is more of a symmetrical design.
And in that tenant space that's on the lower floor, explain the width of that, that area that's being proposed on the elevation.
So I'll take us to A101, which shows us retail frontage of approximately 31 feet, and the majority of that would be glass with just some buttress foundational elements and limestone features, to give us a little bit of that vertical articulation at the pedestrian scale. It just does not continue through because of that asymmetrical element of that space.
And 30 feet is, is something of a more reasonable storefront size, would you say?
Yes, we feel that the, any retail user wants more storefront. The narrower, if we went to 25 feet and narrowed that section, it becomes less desirable for a retail tenant. We would then also have to go deeper into the space, and retail likes that frontage and that exposure.
In the elevation, if you go back to the elevation from your drawing, can you prove this and show the elevation of the building? One of the things that are called for in the design standards is also sort of piers or columns that are aligning or bordering the edge of the front facade. Can you explain what you have in the detailing of the building there? I'm not sure if you've covered that or not. I believe you have brick at the beginning.
Yeah, we have a brick column that continues all the way down and continues up to the fourth floor on either side. It flanks the glass and creates that vertical kind of pier or structure on either side of the building.
Is there any way of increasing, and this is really up, up to the board in your, what you think is appropriate, but yet, under the design standards, it talks about doing, providing sort of a base for those piers. Is there the ability to widen them at all at the bottom visually, or would you put your opinion on that?
In my opinion, if we widen it, it will take away from the tenant signage and that retail element, kind of removing them from, as you can see, this kind of limestone element kind of sticks out beyond that. And so we wanted to keep the balance of that brick on either side. It could be widened, but it, I think it would take away from the visual appeal and pedestrian visibility for the, the retail element.
Okay. You indicated under the horizontal articulation, you had some breaks, it looks like for the top of the third and the top of the fourth floor. Do you have those cornice pieces?
Yes.
You may want to describe them. But that between the second and third, there is not, and the glass is coming all the way to the floor between the second and third?
Between the second, we still have about two feet between the floor elevation, and in that situation, we would have the spandrel glass as our horizontal articulation. It's a slight deviation from the development regulations.
Yeah, is that visible? I think that might have been where the zoning officer was talking about, the visibility of maybe the underside of desks or what have you, from that, that portion of the elevation. In other words, there's no bulkhead or raising of the window, that point, the windows, that grate, or...
Correct. So our, our window is actually about two feet above the floor elevation.
It is two feet above?
Yes.
And that's what allows for that blocking of the view?
Correct.
To the desk, okay.
Correct.
Just wanted to clarify that.
That was clear to the board.
You also indicated the awareness of the outdoors. Is that something of an architectural desire, or is that a, if you can explain that, and you provide that as some of the reasoning for the glass?
Absolutely. We found with numerous office improvements, that outdoor awareness is critical, and we found in, in a number of articles and publications, that an employee or a worker inside a space having natural light and outdoor awareness provides a better working environment, a happier, safer environment for them. In secondary research, it shows better sleep cycles as well. They have exposure to the light all day, so they don't have that darkness and drought, drought... They have exposure to the light all day, so they don't have that darkness and droughtiness during the day, keeps them awake and motivated. It creates higher productivity through the employees, and just creates a better environment for anybody working in that space.
Thank you. Regarding the roof deck itself, you indicated the lighting will be recessed lights that are in the planters or?
They would be surface mounts on a planter. So it's similar to a step light, down light, nothing up, and it would have the one-foot candle around the entire walkway area. We want to have that also screened, so it doesn't overflow off of our roof area.
Have you done an actual layout with that kind of lighting? I'm just a little curious. You may need something a little bit higher.
It's surprisingly intense. I did do a layout, and I do have some, I have some hot spots of about 16-foot candles right under the light, but then it fades out quickly about 10 feet away from each other.
Okay. But they're shielded as well?
Yes, shielded as well.
Okay. On the rooftop deck, do you have any other forms of shade or allowing for shade at the upper roof area?
We're proposing a-
Obviously, sometime there'll be a hotter spot.
Yeah, we were proposing a slight canopy structure. I would defer to operations on whether or not there's an umbrella or some sort of shade feature, but there would be no permanent structure up there.
So you may want permission to have some umbrellas up there. Obviously, if you do put umbrellas up there, some of the things I've heard of in discussions is that roof decks can be susceptible to higher winds.
Correct.
Things of that nature to make sure they're properly tied down.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Anything you want to ask our architect?
I just have a clarification for the lighting plan.
Yes.
I believe it's SP, how do I just?
401.
Yes, SP 401. The .1 FC foot candles is shown beyond the building footprint. Is that the actual property line, just to clarify?
The building is right on the property line. We just carried that over to show that the overage onto adjacent properties is less than, or it meets the ordinance of 0.1.
Okay. Just again, it's .4 at about, at the property line, and it's .1, whatever that offset is between the points. So is it actually .1 at the property line?
I'd have to rerun the calculations.
Okay, thank you.
But we can, as a condition of the approval, we could adjust our lighting to make sure that is-
Yeah, just a minor comment.
Absolutely. We can take care of that.
Yeah, no problem. That was it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the board?
I'd like to talk a little bit about aesthetics. I will show my cards a little bit and offer a little bit of commentary. I think this is a clear improvement from generously the mid-century modern, however you care to characterize it. Interesting history about Mr. Boris, by the way. I was going to use Mr. Jaeger to speak to that. I'm not sure if it's a palazzo or is Miss, as our zoning officer is suggesting, it's a snow globe, but I think we addressed that, so that's fine. But in the 2016 master plan revision, objective 1.04 calls for maintaining the prevailing character of the neighborhoods. I've been here in Summit for ten, more than 10 or so years. I would say that good folks like Mr. Jaeger are investing in our downtown, making it more attractive for both residents, visitors, commercial users. There is an evolution to the character of our downtown. Buildings like this and buildings across the way here is changing, in my opinion, the architectural character of our downtown. How do you, how would you square this call in the master plan revision to maintain the prevailing character of the neighborhoods with a surely positive evolution of the structure and its utility? But how do you see this maybe playing out in the long term? Is this contributing to the preservation of Summit's downtown, its unique character? Or is it perhaps kind of threatening its evolution and taking us a step in the wrong direction?
I would look at that as a pedestrian walking down the street, shopping, or going out to get food and then entering an office building. I think the character of the retail element in the entrance is very much of that character of City of Summit. We're just bringing a little bit more of that modern element to the upper floors to make that a more impressionable space for a potential tenant. So the character, in my opinion, would be maintained from the pedestrian point of view and anybody driving down the street, shopping, looking for food. The scale and relationship to adjacent buildings and tenants would be in line with that.
It's worth noting that the aesthetic that it's replacing is, I'll say, it's not worth preserving. I think the clearest way to say it. So it's for sure, again, what flees from my opinion, well, the opportunity to deliver is a board on it. It's an improvement. I don't know, as a prior one says, suggested it's in conformance with the traditional architecture of Summit, but that's, we can debate that. If there's anything that anyone would like to add to that from the applicant's side, you're certainly welcome.
We're definitely trying to incorporate the more traditional elements, the brick materials, that stone material, some of the stucco. It's just the, to us, that glass was a critical element in desiring a good tenant on those upper floors and somebody who Summit wants. Those smaller, broken-up tenants that are, create darker spaces just don't bring the life to the city. So I think the improvements on the retail element, bringing that retail forward, will really help with that pedestrian comfort.
Impact on their sleep schedules.
Yeah.
I can see this brochure's writing itself already, Mr. Jaeger, so, okay, that's wonderful. Any other questions from the board?
Did you happen to mention how far setback that glass railing is?
Yes, it varies. So on A105, we vary from about 18 inches at the one spot here. Just the structure of this building is orthogonal. The alignment of the street is slightly skewed.
Right.
So we have a varied depth on where that is because we want to land on that existing structure. So we go from about 18 inches to about 7 feet 2 inches.
Okay. But from standing in front of that Smoothie King, I think, it's across the street, you really can't see it, I imagine.
No, the line of sight, you can see, you'll catch a glimpse of it.
And I think I know the answer to this question, right? Because Springfield Avenue runs east to west, and I'm just, I'm thinking about the glass and sun rising and setting and driving. So this is a lot of glass that we're not necessarily used to. Like, nobody's going to catch a glare of this.
No, it's not going to be reflective to the point where we are like beaming onto-
Blinded.
Yeah, blinding the drivers. No.
Okay. So we don't have any real safety issues?
No, in the time that you would have that, is that you have, during the wintertime is your lowest angle of light, and that would be in this angle, and it would reflect back down to the street in the opposite direction of somebody traveling.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be directly shining. It actually would-
Well, they travel both directions.
Well, they travel east-west, so this is oriented in the south direction.
If you're coming from the west to the east in the morning. Can't imagine that, I mean, you're kind of deep in this kind of cavern.
You'd have to be looking for the sun.
Right, okay. All right. All right, I'm satisfied that it's not an issue.
Any question?
Did you guys ever evaluate masonry finish instead of the glass spandrel across the second and third floor? That might be able to bring in an element to connect the buildings together and keep that aesthetic.
We, yeah, we had considered it. At that stage, we were looking at ease of constructability also and having that continuous glass made with the steel structure behind. Once we incorporate that masonry into it, it requires support of that masonry because now it would be floating. There's no support for it. So the steel structure of the building that's existing is more conducive for a glass frontage.
Have you looked at a metal finish there that could have replicated a simple thing?
We did not consider a metal synthetic finish. We wanted to kind of stay with the true nature of the materials.
And the last question, I know a couple people have raised this, what kind of window finishes, window treatments interior-wise are you going to be considering?
So in this one, I would suggest to Mark to use solar shades. That way, we're filtering the light but not stopping that light from coming through. So it'd be more of a transparent window shade.
Any other questions from the board? Excellent. Note, there are no further members of the interested public here, so questions limited to us this evening, unfortunately. I'm watching the time. I think this would be an appropriate time to take perhaps a short recess.
Should we go back to Mr. Jaeger on the?
Well, let's ask Hillary, though, who else we have here.
Okay.
And I'll offer some opinions on how maybe we can-
Perfect. So we have the traffic engineer, and then we have a planner.
Okay. So I think we want to hear from a planner. I'd like to hear from Mr. Jaeger operationally in terms of the roof at least, I don't know if there's any other elements. Perhaps you could, after the recess, just help summarize the traffic engineer's testimony.
I mean, his testimony is going cheaply.
It should be very limited.
It's going to be brief.
Okay. So perhaps we can move quickly through that, and I think we can accomplish and close the case this evening, which is the goal. So let's take five minutes to break, stretch our legs, and then we'll crack.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sold.
All right.
We're back. Ms. Holt, would you like to call your next person?
Yes, please. Can I call Connor Hughes for traffic engineering?
And if you could raise your right hand, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And please state your name, spell your last name.
Certainly. My name's Connor Hughes, last name spelled H-U-G-H-E-S.
Thank you. And have you appeared before the board?
I have not.
Can you briefly describe your background, experience, and three boards you've appeared before recently?
Certainly. So I have a professional engineering license in the state of New Jersey for about two years. I have a bachelor's of science in civil engineering from NJIT in 2017. Been practicing traffic engineering since then, so about six years now. And I have appeared and been accepted as an expert witness in front of various other boards, Union, Newark, Jersey City, Fairfield, Dover, Butler. I could go through a couple more, but you get the idea.
That was a very bad effort. Any questions from the board, or would you like to accept this credentials, accept your credentials?
Thank you.
And if you could, again, just briefly go through what you did to prepare yourself for this testimony.
Certainly. So we did do a review of the site and the surrounding area. We reviewed the applications, the plans that were all submitted, all the reviews that were provided to us by the Towns and Professionals, and reviewed the ordinance requirements with particular concerning concern to the parking requirements.
And using EXP 101, can you please describe for the board the existing and then the proposed onsite parking and circulation?
Yes, if I can find it. Okay. So now that we've got it up, so has this been submitted?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have the existing site over on the left-hand side of the drawing, and then the middle portion here is the proposed. So at the rear of the site is the existing and proposed parking area with the eight spaces. Currently, these four spaces to the north are, I guess I'll say, up in embankment. As you can see here in this picture in the middle on the right side of the drawing. So what we're proposing to do is flatten that down, pave it, and also shift the southerly four parking spaces closer to the building so that we can provide the adequate 23 feet as required by ordinance for the two-way parking. We're also changing the striping to match the ordinance requirement. Instead of what exists now, which is the single solid line, we're going to do the hairpin striping and then also add these paved marking arrows to delineate the two-way traffic flow. And again, the 23-foot aisle to match the ordinance requirement of 23 feet. There is a dead-end parking aisle which is existing, which will remain as well. And then in the red dotted outline here, that is the parking easement with the neighboring property to the north, 52 DeForest. So you can see this gray shaded area is the easement area that is needed to be able to provide the adequate parking depth for these four parking stalls that helps us provide the 18 feet. And then as far as the access easement, as was mentioned, it's to the west of the property, connecting this alleyway here to the parking access as well as the side street over here off of Springfield. So that's how the vehicles access into the parking area. They come in, this alleyway to the back of the parking, and then out in the same direction.
And you stated there's eight spaces, but seven spaces will be dedicated to this building.
Yes, that's correct.
And then can you just describe for the board what, if any, effect the increase in FAR over what currently exists will have on off-street parking and traffic in the CRBD?
Certainly. So we did look at the proposed expansion. As far as how it pertains to the parking requirements and the parking demands, specifically the retail space, the 1,568 square feet, as well as the additional office space, 1,713 square feet. So we looked at the parking requirement from the ordinance. For retail, that's one per 200 square feet, so that requires eight spaces. And for the office, they actually have a requirement for both, I guess, typical or general office as well as medical office. There's two different requirements. General office is one per 300 square feet, that requires six spaces. And medical is one per 150, which requires 11. So when you add all those up, if you consider the general office on top of the retail, that'd be a requirement of 14 spaces. Or the medical space, or medical office would require a total parking requirement of 19 spaces for the additional area that's being added to the building. As we just talked about, we're providing effectively seven for the actual building, that one space is for the neighbor to the right. So as far as impacts, they're going to be very minimal, being that it's in a downtown urban environment, mass transit, pedestrian walkability. All that is factoring into a lessened parking demand. And with the minor amount of space that's being added, we really don't foresee any significant increase to the parking demands of the site.
And in your opinion and based on ITE standards, is there sufficient parking in close proximity to the subject property to accommodate any potential increase in off-street parking?
Yes, absolutely. Directly across the street, we have the parking garage, which can be employee parking. There's employee parking available there as well as typical public parking. There's also employee parking available at the railroad avenue lot adjacent to the train station. That's about a thousand-foot walk. And then for retail customers, visitors of the office, things of that nature. There's on-street parking as well as other public lots in the area, particularly along DeForest Avenue. The parking garage again. And then there's a lot at Bank Street, which is about a 1,500-foot walk. All these which are within a reasonable walking distance of the half a mile, which is put forth by ITE.
And finally, in your opinion, will the increase in FAR as it relates to off-street parking and trip generation be a substantial detriment to the public good or impair the zoning ordinance and master plan?
No, it will not for a number of reasons. First one being, again, the minor increase of the floor area will not generate a significant amount of additional vehicles, particularly given the downtown setting. So that goes into not only parking demand, but also vehicle trip generation. The actual trip generation is going to be very, the additional trip generation will be very minor. Again, there's a lot of additional parking available locally in terms of public facilities. Again, mass transit usage, the train station's about a quarter mile away. So you get a portion of people that can avail the train service as well as, there's a couple bus lines in the area. It's a very walkable neighborhood, of course. So you have all those different features and attributes that, you know, help this kind of mesh into the town and allow it to operate in an efficient manner. And also the retail and the office portion are compatible with one another in the sense that the parking demands offset each other. Whereas you have the office use that peaks during the day. You have the retail use which peaks during nighttime on weekends when there is no office parking demand. So the uses that are in the, that are being proposed really complement each other in that sense.
I don't have any other questions.
Questions from DFT or anything for the traffic engineer?
Just a suggestion that the existing easements that you've noted and within the testimony is if you can depict them on your plans as for the final plan.
Certainly.
It'd just be easier because the parking easements that we have, the memos and the easements that agreements, all that is kind of blurry.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, we can certainly fine through that.
Ed, no questions.
I have a comment which maybe you can then take as a question. To get back to Mr. Jaeger's earlier testimony about the current capacity of the building and the possible capacity of the new building.
Yep.
Yeah, sure, the increase in size might only increase the capacity in terms of employees. I believe Mr. Jaeger said 10 to 12, if I'm misquoting him, he can correct me. But the building's relatively empty now. So if Mr. Jaeger's fortunate enough to fill up the new building, it might actually be, if I'm doing my math right, I think 40 to 50 more employees theoretically.
Sure.
I mean, and no, if the building is full, people are in the office. Does that impact your analysis of parking demands? Because that sounds like a lot to me.
Yeah, yep, understood the concern. Great question. Our analysis really just looks at, again, that, you know, that expansion portion. But if the building were to be filled up, we do feel that with the public parking facilities in the area available to employees, the fact that you can avail yourselves to the mass transit, the walkability of the town, that it would still operate in an efficient manner. And the parking as it operates today would still work with the minor additional employees that would be added with the expansion. Hope that answers it.
Yeah, it does. It's still, I mean, it's still, the concern I have is, yes, the capacity's only going to go up 10 to 12. But in reality, if the building fills up, it's a lot more than that.
Yeah, understood.
So theoretically, it's a much bigger impact, I think, than you're getting at.
Understood.
I have a question. Did I understand you correctly that your analysis is that the building taken as a whole under the applicable codes and guidelines that the building would require, once it's retrofitted, would require 19 spaces?
So that, no, so the analysis only takes into account the square footage being added because the understanding we got from our conversations with the planner, is that?
Can you give us, can you give us a number of what this building would require in terms of spaces?
Yeah, I could. I have to run the calculation.
Post-retrofit.
Yeah.
I mean, again, I just would like to jump in and say that the purpose in downtown is because of the way the development is. That's why they don't have any off-street parking requirements.
I understand. I understand. I wouldn't expect you to actually be able to provide it. And, I mean, I assume that this is a variance that we're.
No, technically, the ordinance does not have a set parking requirement.
Oh.
There is no parking requirement.
Oh, there isn't?
In the CRBD, correct.
Okay, all right.
So want to know that number?
Nah.
Go, Jess.
If you're going to have medical parking, how many handicap parking spaces are you allocating? What does that do to your parking back there with 23 feet? And, because there isn't much around there. There's one across the street, if I'm not mistaken. There are two in the bottom of the tier parking garage, and there are some in DeForest. But for a medical patient who's on crutches or something like that, they're going to need somehow to get into that building easier.
Right.
Can I ask that Michael Sass, the architect, answer that question?
Mr. Sass, welcome back.
Thank you. The accessible entrance for this building is on Springfield Avenue. If you park in the rear, you have to go down three steps to enter the building. So it's technically not wheelchair accessible. It's not the easiest path. In an accessible condition or a handicapped person, they would typically park in the front. They have the tag that would allow them to park in those spaces free, and they would have front accessibility into the building. So the dedicated handicap in the rear wouldn't really give them the accessible path into the building.
Well, they're not free. They have to max the meter, and then they can stay all day. That's the state law. They can, they can park in the handicap spaces all day long. And if you look, you'll see that they do. Happening to be, happening to be one of those people that has one of those handicap stickers. It's, it's really helpful when you need it.
I'm concerned, I guess, with.
But is there, would there be a reason for us to consider not allowing medical?
In this situation, there'd be a ratio of one space required per the accessible requirements. We could turn one of the spaces into accessible space, but it does not give them the accessible path into the building. So that would be our primarily concern, is that if somebody parked in the back and they need to then wheel around the alleyway and then come back down Springfield Avenue.
The other thing, I'd just like to say that medical offices are permitted use in the CRBD. So it's the off-street parking or handicap parking is not required for any building that has medical use.
Technically true.
Not helping.
No, it's interesting consideration.
Again, one could be provided for the ratio. But again, our, it's a safety concern about somebody traveling down that alleyway where cars are traveling rather than a pedestrian entrance.
And medical could be dental, it could be a psychologist's office, it could be a lot of things.
There's also, my question, I guess it leads to another question. Why isn't there a handicapped accessible exit out the back? Somebody's in the back of the building and needs to get out. They got to go all the way to the front?
So accessibility has.
Or do I pick them up and just carry them?
No, accessibility is not necessarily always wheelchair, so stair could be an accessible path. It's just your wheelchair path would be to the front of the building.
Jay, did you have a question down here? Can I see your hand raised? No? Wally, anything for you? Mr. Sass.
Paul Phillips, please.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to hear from Mr. Jaeger before the planning testimony? It's kind of up to you.
It's up to you. It's whatever the board would like.
Sorry not to chew you away here. Usually the planning is the capstone of any.
Sure. So we'll recall Mr. Jaeger.
Let's do that. Thank you. So I think there are a number of just more operational-focused questions. On my list is naturally the roof deck.
Yes.
So just to kind of bring you into the conversation, at least Andy and I are having, was, as you know from a number of different properties you've been involved with in the downtown, roof deck is a desirable attribute of this kind of development. We as a board are seeing a number of those applications come before us and looking for some kind of consistency without necessarily handicapping the developers and the applicants. So I would just ask for you to reflect upon some operational constraints you may place on the use of the roof deck to help avoid any infringement of light airspace, sound on neighboring properties. But kind of give the floor to you to reflect on that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, yes, we have had real-life experience with a number of the properties that I'd previously mentioned with roof decks and have had this conversation with zoning boards and planning boards often about that. So striking the balance between making it functional, safe, and operational and at the same time not making it an impediment and or obnoxious or intrusive on surrounding neighbors is always part of this discussion. So typically, I believe, as Mr. Sass or Mr. Sapsaris mentioned before, from a practical standpoint, this is a spring, summer, fall type of a function typically. So you are going to have later daytime light hours to the extent that the weather permits beyond darkness. We clearly want to be able to provide safe access around downlighting, as I believe was previously discussed, just for safety purposes. We're not looking to turn this into Studio 54 or a ballroom or anything else. It's just purely to be able to allow people to safely navigate around the roof terrace and then into, obviously, the stairwell and the. So restricting hours, we're accustomed to saying.
Do you have a proposal for that? What would you?
No, that is, I think in some instances, we've done 9:30 or 10:00. Which, again, in the peak season, if it's dark at 7:00, if it's dark at 8:00, it allows people to be bleeding into what is, you know, a reasonable time without creating a disruption around it, without shooing them off, you know, at any particular moment.
You used another application, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM as allowable hours of tenant use. That sound reasonable?
Yes, yes, it certainly does. It certainly does. You asked a que.
Keep that consistent with what we've done. I mean, we've done this on two or three other, mostly your applications. Can we just use the same hours and have them looked up so that we have the exact same ones?
I did look up a recent resolution.
Yeah, that's what happens when I go to them.
To end that was that 10:00 PM to 7:00.
Yeah, it's probably, I think the first one we did at 1225 Summit Avenue, you know, dates back now 12, 13 years. And that's evolved, I think, in terms of what desirability is and or standards. Most recently was probably 125 Summit Avenue. I honestly forget what we agreed to there. I think 40 Beechwood was a couple years ago.
40 Beechwood is probably a better point of reference than the residential at 125.
Yeah. Or 40 Beechwood and 466 Springfield, I think, too, are.
I guess a challenge back to the board just to align on some consistency, probably reflecting the annual report and even see if the DRO can address it, just out of respect for the applicants that come before us.
The other question that you asked, Mr. Chair, was about use of seating, what goes on, bars, grills, et cetera.
Sound systems, disco balls, TVs, whatever.
Only on occasion, no. No, clearly, this is set with rules and regulations of the building as to kind of what can go on up there. It's, if there are events as opposed to people just literally gathering, there are occasionally opportunities for catering or outside services to be brought in for an employee function or something. Those typically aren't permanent structures. They come and go. So I think as Mr. Sass said, most of the seating is fairly flexible and allowed to be moved. But it's not the kind that we would anticipate is a place where there's permanent structures to serve alcohol, cook food, and those types of things.
I don't know if you know, or maybe you want to, your professionals with you, fire code would restrict occupancy on the roof deck, I presume.
Yes.
I don't know if we have a number for that.
Yes, again, we have done that in the past with prior applications. I don't, and actually, the resolution I most recently saw at 40 Beechwood only commented about per fire code. There was no calculation or no math to it. I don't know how that number was arrived at. I'd have to go back and actually try to recreate and restructure that thought process.
I don't know if that's available to a civil engineer or something, just an approximation of that. I would rather personally conform to the fire code and use that as a consistent standard.
Yeah, I think for a building of this size, my sense is it's something like 40. And again, some of that may have to do with paths of egress and being able to get people, obviously, the intent would be to be able to get people out of the, off the roof safely. God forbid something happened, so.
I think an additional operational concern for the roof is we talk about hours of operation, and we would note 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. We've talked about, there's no sound system anticipated here, just to touch on that point again. Lighting, I think we've adequately, I think we've adequately addressed. Let's just make us raise the issue of furniture or umbrellas, partly for shade. And there's no call for permanent real shade structure up there outside of the elevator entrance. Umbrellas?
So all of the other applications that we've worked on that I'm familiar with have allowed umbrellas, but also, you know, building management, who's responsible for making sure that in the case of wind events, storms, what have you, those are taken care of. So I think we've got experience through all of those prior examples that I've mentioned with, we've got those kinds of appearances.
We'd like to just find some language in the resolution to, I don't know, reflect the adequate securing of these, you know, non-permanent elements. I don't know what the right language is, but this will be. But it's more about safety, and I live on Willand Avenue. I don't want to see an umbrella shoot down off the roof and head to my house.
Nor do we.
Right, thank you. So Andy, I will ask you and Hillary to kind of lay the language on that. But I can't imagine being tremendously specific on that.
I don't know that we, well, unless you want to see a condition of approval based on that.
The only condition I could see is the hours of operation.
We usually do include hours of operation as a condition, and I would ask if that's acceptable here as well as you just testified.
Yes, would be.
But as far as securing items on the roof, I think we've heard testimony that that's their proposal. I don't know that we necessarily.
It's my assumption that the applicant and their insurance company is interested in the safe operation of the roof, and that would be an obvious instance. Is there anything else, Ed, that kind of came to mind? If anything, you want to mention the phrase anchorage, a copper anchorage for anything that's an umbrella or susceptible to wind loading. That's all. All right. So that was one operational item. The other, other item that I just captured there was maybe just to reflect a little bit about the tenancy and the traffic engineering testimony. From your experience as a developer and looking specifically at this site, is there an expectation that a substantial portion of the tenants, the occupants of the building would commute in via train or bus or some public transportation mean? Or is the primary means of conveyance private vehicle?
It's still private vehicle. You certainly do, given the transit oriented nature of a town like Summit. And I think it's increased in popularity over the last 13 and 14 years from a tenancy and an office employer, employee standpoint. Clearly, one of those factors is the ability to commute in and out of Summit. And you, you do see a fair amount, particularly with young, young people, early morning coming westbound out of Wilkins, Jersey City, New York. It's not certainly unusual at all to see a number of young professionals, but on a relative basis, that's still certainly the minority. I think that that could continue to increase and will continue to be a factor in both employees and employees wanting, employers and employees wanting to be in Summit. But it's still for the foreseeable future. It's going to continue to be a vehicular competition.
Maybe I cringe a little bit when I heard Summit referred to as an urban town. But I mean, this is the most urban element of the municipality. I still consider it a bedroom community, but that is evolving, so just my opinions. Regarding tenancy, the other item that Joe was speaking to is medical use. Just from your experience, what do you know of the current tenants or comparable buildings? Have you found on-street parking and the availability of handicap parking in the vicinity of these downtown commercial spaces to be adequate to serve medical uses?
No. I mean, honestly, when, when you see what's going on with Summit Medical Group and Atlantic Health System and the crazy expansion that this, the healthcare system has gone on in these suburban communities over the last five, 10, 15 years, there's a reason they're not in downtown Summit. And it, it still clearly is driven by concerns about, it's a, whether it be real or a perceived issue for that kind of a use with parking. There's a reason that Summit Medical left and there's a reason that they have, you know, even with all of their expansion, they haven't come back.
And not to peer too far into the future, but for that reason, while there may be medical use in this building, it's not intended to be a solely medical professional facility. You're open to a broader range of tenants and likely to attract a more diverse use. Is that, is that fair?
Yeah, I, I would not envision a significant, if any, portion of this building, honestly, to be medical. One of the problems with co-tenancy with medical use is that most what you would consider to be typical, general, I hesitate to use the term first class, but you know, financial services firms, et cetera, typically don't like to cohabitate with medical uses. So it's typically an all or nothing proposition. And I, I, I think the probability of 475 becoming a complete medical building is extremely low.
Is there any, just on that thread, just to kind of close that, is there any particular concentration of use? Or you anticipate this to be offices for some kind of corporation, a Monday to Friday kind of ton of use?
Yeah, I think so. I think there's, there's a wide range of industries that continue to show interest in being located in Summit. Financial services is clearly one, but we're also seeing tech and bio and other types of firms. So I think that there's a strong possibility that that would continue to be the type of that that we would attract.
Excellent. Okay, those are my two operational questions. Anything else from the board while we have Mr. Jaeger? Questions from our professionals?
Before I'm dismissed, may I make one comment on architecture?
Yes, please.
While I'm not an architect, so I'm going to try to-
Your checkbook, so go ahead.
I'm going to try to keep this very short. So, but I do, I do think I, I have a pretty good feel about leasing space at the end of the day, which is, is in addition to doing something that's great for the downtown and hopefully bringing high paying, nice jobs to the town and continue to, to facilitate our retail base and everything else. You know, I, I've, I've lived in Summit for 27 years. I've worked largely in Summit. My office is here and done a lot of development work for the past 13, 14 years. So I do take, I do take architecture seriously. And I do, as you mentioned before, Mr. Chair, I, I try to pay a particular attention to the types of tenants that we bring to Summit, what its impact is, and clearly the architectural, both diversity and consistency. I think we, we sometimes get into a little bit of a problem when we start talking, using words like traditional and historic and what have you, because every, architecture is literally in the eye of the beholder. If you took the block from Kent Place to Woodland, starting with the Strand Mall and kind of working your way from there, I think we can see there's a, there's a lot of eclectanness in and around this one block, but also through town as a whole. So we, we knew that this was going to be a point of conversation. And I, I do think that this is a unique situation that we've got about 400 linear feet of perimeter of this building, of which we can literally find places to put windows and about 25% of it. That creates a huge challenge. And to think that with 145 foot deep building, there's a possibility that somebody may be sitting 70 feet from a window. That's 20, that's 24 yards, right, if you think about it in whatever context you want. I don't think that's a work environment, frankly, that many of us would find overly attractive. I mean, we acquired the building. We knew it had its challenges. We did all of our diligence. So none of this, I'm not, you know, looking for any, any sympathies. We know the challenges that we have to address. So clearly, the facade design was one that we spent a lot of time talking about and trying to figure out how we could try to find the best balance possible with that historic, traditional context, but give us the best chance we can to try to attract the type of tenant that I think we'd all be proud to have here in Summit. So that's what we've come up with. That's my two cents and I appreciate your time.
If you'd like to come back with the application for the Strand building, I'd be interested to see that, but that's a separate subject.
Hopefully in time.
In time, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. All right, let's hear some planning testimony.
Yes, Paul Phillips, please.
Do you saw from the testimony you're about to give in this matter, is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name.
Paul Phillips, P-H-I-L-L-I-P-S.
Thank you. And any changes to your credentials since the last time you appeared?
Uh, no, and my license is in good standing.
Welcome back, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you.
You're a planner at our central casting, so.
Thank you. Good, good, good to be back, Mr. Chairman.
And if you could just, again, just briefly go through the steps you took to prepare for your testimony.
Yeah, I inspected the subject premises. I surveyed adjacent uses, reviewed the plans. I conferred with the applicant and the development team. I reviewed the Summit Development Regulations and Master Plan Documentation. And I did also review the staff and board consultant reports.
So based on your review of the application, the reports, the site inspection, all the other relevant materials, have you prepared a planning report and testimony in connection with this matter?
Yes, I prepared testimony in connection with all of the variants required.
And can you go through that for the board, please?
Sure. So this property is located in your CRBD zone district. As you heard, the application requires two D variances, a D4 variance for exceeding the floor area ratio and a D6 variance for exceeding the height in the zone by more than the 10% standard as per the municipal annual statute. There are also several C bulk variances, which I will touch upon as well. But let me start with the D4 variance. So the applicant is seeking an FAR of 349.6%. The zone allows a maximum of 300% where a building is compliant in terms of use. The building is proposed is compliant, includes offices above ground floor, retail facing the street. Also, as the board is aware, the standard of proof for a D4 variance was established in the Randolph Town Center case. And it involves obviously a lesser burden than a D1 use variance. And what the court in the Randolph case held was that an applicant need not demonstrate that a site is particularly suitable for increased FAR. Rather, an applicant has to demonstrate to your satisfaction that the site can overcome any problems associated with an FAR which is higher than what your ordinance prescribes. So in other words, can the site still function consistent with sound planning without detrimental impacts, notwithstanding the increase in the FAR? And I say that with the premise that an FAR standard is, is intended principally to control the intensity of use and secondarily to control the building bulk and mass. So with that introduction, I would offer the following. First, I think it's important to establish that the baseline FAR for this property is 299%. That's the existing condition. So obviously, in its current state, the site is at its upper limit of FAR. Secondly, as you've heard from other witnesses, the driving force behind this application to expand the FAR is number one, to transform what is now an older, and I think you, as you've heard and I would agree, obsolete office building into a more modern, state of the art facility. And number two, to eliminate the ground floor office space facing Springfield Avenue and replace it with retail space intended to activate the street consistent with both your master plan and the objectives of the underlying CRBD zoning. And given the current building's design, the only way to accomplish these objectives is to actually expand the building in several key locations, as has been discussed by the applicant and the architect. And I'm not going to belabor this, but from a planning standpoint, I would just echo some of the challenges associated with the existing building as I see them. Its significant depth, its lack of windows generally on the side facades and its recessed sections on the lower floors in the front and also in the back on the second floor, as you've heard. And again, all of which restrict the amount of natural light into the offices themselves. And it really does, and I would concur, make for generally dark and dreary interior spaces to go along with a generally outdated layout and poor aesthetics of the building itself. And as you've heard, the existing space has been difficult to tenant. And I would be so bold as to say, things are not going to get better in the future without some form of intervention vis a vis this building. So the applicant, again, is proposing to fill in the recessed dead space in front of the building, essentially bring it in line with adjacent street wall buildings and again, convert the street facing ground level to retail consistent with the master plan and zoning. The applicant is also seeking to extend the second floor in the rear, where as you saw from the exhibits and the photos, it's significantly recessed from the upper floors in the rear. And again, the intent here is to bring more natural light into this office space. And this is being done in combination with a new front facade, which you heard will also have a significant level of fenestration to maximize natural light into the office space. The total FAR expansion is just under 3,700 square feet and that is across all the floors. So in terms of the site accommodating the FAR, several points I think are worth noting. First, the applicant is not adding an additional floor or story to the building. Secondly, I view the front expansion as positive and beneficial from a planning and zoning standpoint. Again, it gets rid of the dead space. It creates a conforming street wall building. It allows more light to penetrate the interior. It activates the street and perhaps most importantly, it provides for complying and I believe more marketable retail space at the street wall, again, consistent with CRBD objectives. Third, the second story addition in the rear, again, to provide more natural light and again, recognizing that this building is narrow, it's deep and it lacks windows on the side facades on this particular floor, meaning the second floor. I think the mitigating factor with regard to the rear addition is it's largely out of the public view shed. And also, it doesn't reduce the existing parking supply in the rear of the building as it still can be accommodated underneath the expanded second floor. And lastly, as we've discussed, the CRBD zoning does not require any off-street parking for non-residential use. And to Ed's point, admittedly, that goes hand in hand with the maximum FAR allowed in the district. But as you've heard, the applicant will continue to maintain a supply of eight off-street parking spaces, which to some extent should offset any potentially adverse impacts associated with the increased floor air that's being sought. And I think the bottom line is, is that there really is no practical way to provide any additional parking on this site, given the built context. As you've heard from our traffic and parking expert, there is adequate public parking available in very close proximity to the site, which can address any technical shortfall. So in conclusion, I believe the site can accommodate any prospective problems associated with the additional FAR. And which leads me to transition to the D6 height variance. You've heard the numbers. The zone allows no more than 42 foot height. The existing building already exceeds that at 46.66 feet. The applicant is proposing to increase that by a whopping 1.7 feet? 0.17 feet, 0.17 feet. And again, that is, that de minimis change results to the measurement of average grade plane resulting from the expansion. So it's really technical in nature. I think the key here is the applicant's not seeking to increase the height of the building per se, but rather allow the fully expanded building to have a similar height as the existing building. And again, this is more technical variance, although as I mentioned earlier, it does rise to the level of a D6 variance. So I must, I guess, touch upon the proof requirement for a D6 height variance, which comes out of another case, which is known as Grosso versus Spring Lake Heights. And in that case, the court held that an applicant for a D6 variance must demonstrate that the increase in height will not offend the purposes of the ordinance as they relate to a height standard. And those would be seeing things such as preserving neighborhood context, providing adequate light air in open space and promoting a desirable visual environment. So here, even though the building will now be fully four stories and four stories at the front setback, it's still a four-story building as it is now. And the only difference is viewed from the streetscape or Springfield Avenue or across the street is that actually the building is going to be more in keeping with the built context by being a street wall building and also provide now for active retail on the ground floor. Again, consistent with the built context as well as your planning and zoning objectives. I would also point out that the zone does encourage buildings with no front yard setback. So I think for these reasons, there's a legitimate basis to grant the D6 variance. With regard to both D variances, I think several purposes of the statute would be advanced as part of the special reasons test. Purpose A, which is to guide development in a manner that promotes the public welfare. Purpose G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. And purpose I, relative to the existing building, which we would be to promote a desirable visual environment. Also, I think a number of policy goals. I reviewed your, as I mentioned, your master plan documentation, including the last comprehensive plan, the re-exams, the downtown plan, and there are at least probably four or five goals that clearly this would advance. Upgrade older buildings is one of the objectives. Reinforce the CBD as a mixed-use core that is pedestrian oriented. Reinforce the city as a desirable location for office use within the existing development pattern. Encourage economic development and revitalization through new investment and promoting uniform setback lines within downtown blocks, all of which I think would be promoted here. There's a technical variance in that the expanded portion of the building will be four stories. And as you heard, the zone only allows three-story buildings. This is a C bulk variance for number of stories, not a D variance. And again, the planning rationale is straightforward. The existing building is four stories. The applicant is not proposing to go higher only to expand or fill in those portions of the building for the reasons that have been described. There are two related variances for the height of rooftop appurtenances. I think other witnesses have best addressed this. The elevator enclosure, which is 17 feet, your ordinance has a 15-foot maximum, which by the way is standard. But as you heard here, the 17 feet is necessary to house all of the structural equipment associated with the rooftop elevator access. As you've also heard, and I think there was an exhibit, based on the setback from the front, meaning from the edge of the roof, you will not see that from across the street. There was a perspective. The second variance is that rooftop appurtenances cannot exceed the allowable height in the zone by eight feet. If you do the math at eight to 42, you have 50 feet. The existing building is 46 feet and change. Obviously, if you have a rooftop appurtenance like the elevator enclosure, you cannot feasibly do it within those limitations. The rooftop lighting- The rooftop lighting, there's a technical variance because the ordinance says that the maximum mounting height be 15 feet. The rooftop lighting is obviously above 15 feet, but as you heard, it is low-level and shielded. I see all of these variances, actually C1-type variances that, and I believe there's obviously a level of practical difficulty or hardship associated with any improvements that are seeking to maintain the existing height scheme vis-à-vis this particular building. So, and lastly, in terms of the negative criteria, I see no substantial detriment to the public good or substantial impairment of the zone plan if these variances are granted. And again, I say that given the existing building context that the applicant is seeking to maintain. And Hillary, I think I've covered every...
I think you did, yes.
Excellent, all right. Mr. Stengas, before we maybe dig into just more general commentary or have you, I do want to address the roof height real quick, if we can. Can you speak briefly to just what we observed? And then Andy, I don't know how we want to just note it in the resolution, but...
Certainly. And the way I saw it when the architect was explaining the rooftop decking that's being proposed, that's put on top of a dunage or a rack-type system. That rack-type system evidently will raise that floor elevation up approximately two feet, I believe, is what the applicant was indicating to me. And in that instance, what I don't want, if this board was to approve the application, for you to get the construction drawings and then for someone to see the roof height has increased. So essentially, we should capture that two-foot roof height elevation change in the proposed roof deck area that's being proposed. So that's what I would offer to the board.
How would we address that resolution, Andy?
So then that would be a variance for 48.83 feet.
Just for that feature.
So, and I think we would capture that in the language of variance being requested, that the majority of the roof is the 46.83 as proposed. However, the portion of the deck will be approximately 48.83.
That's acceptable.
Can we just specify the number of square feet?
What is the square footage of that deck?
Do you have the square footage? Do you have the footprint of that? They do give you the footprint as well on the plan, so you can rely on that.
1,890 square feet.
1,890 square feet.
Mr. Stengas, sorry, some more general comments, if you have them. I just want to make sure we capture that one.
Yeah, there was just a few things from the master plan I think we need to touch on, particularly for the style of building that's being proposed. I know the architect had provided his testimony with regard to the detailing that's provided. There are three items that we've identified in our report. I'm just going to leave these briefly so you have a basis to go from. It says to recognize and preserve the historic character of the city. The choice of texture, color, and type of materials for the exterior finish should harmonize with the structural and natural surroundings. And that in the review of applications for development which involve historic sites or districts, this is not a historic site, but downtown is a district, and any sites, districts which have been identified in the plan element as potential historic sites or districts. Every effort be made to preserve the integrity of such sites or districts. In your professional opinion, how does the proposal itself address these issues?
So, again, I really don't have anything to add. I would just concur with the comments that were made by the project architect as well as Mr. Jaeger. To me, this is sort of a balancing act, if you will. And I think that the applicant and the architect have attempted to address, and I'll specifically say at the kind of design standards as opposed to the more generic master plan goals. And again, that balance is trying to come up with a office space that's marketable in the present environment with trying to maintain, you know, neighborhood character or built context. And I would also concur with Mr. Jaeger while there are, and I hate to use the word traditional too, but while there are some buildings that you could characterize as traditional, there are other eclectic buildings, including buildings in this block. So I think all that can consider, Ed, I think that certainly in my professional opinion, that this applicant, this application would certainly can advance those goals that you just articulated.
Thank you. I think you've covered most, if not all, of the other items as well that we identified, and I have my third question. Anything you want to find?
No, thank you.
Questions then from the board? Wally, come on in, nothing?
Comments?
Just comments. We'll get to the discussions soon enough. I think that's it. Andy, any other somewhere to press for the proof of the resolution?
Nope.
Wonderful. Thank you for the wonderful conclusion. Is also anything in conclusion from the applicant?
Well, so I have a long summation, but then I also have a short summation. So I will ask the board which they prefer.
Sure.
Okay. So I just would like to note that the statutory criteria has been met by the testimony and evidence presented, which demonstrates that the site can accommodate the increase in the FAR in height, that the application advances numerous purposes of zoning, that the property and existing non-conforming structure creates an extraordinary and exceptional situation that creates practical difficulty and undue hardship in developing the property, and that the application will provide a benefit to the community with an absence of any detriment, and that there will be no substantial impairment to the zoning ordinance and master plan.
All said.
That's it.
Excellent. Okay. Before we enter into deliberations, two things is I'll note, I think, unless they're being hidden behind some of the easels here, there are no members of the interested public. They didn't show up at all during the question, during the witness presentation, or the opportunity to offer their commentary, positive or negative. So that's unfortunately they're lost. And I'll offer, Andy, then, the opportunity just to quickly summarize the conditions we've noted, understanding that so much of the testimony and the points that are addressed there and will be captured within the body of the resolution naturally and the exhibits that have been presented. But if you, Andy, can quickly run us through the conditions that we've noted.
I do have seven. First is our usual compliance with those conditions noted in the Board Engineers memorandum. Second is that the applicant will comply with the recommendations noted in the City Foresters memorandum. Third is that the revised lighting plan will be submitted to the Board Engineer for review and approval. Fourth is the applicant will comply with the construction officials' report. Fifth, the applicant will comply with the final paragraph of the Fire Chief's report. Sixth, mechanical equipment testing will be limited to Monday through Friday, noon to 4:00 p.m. And seventh and final condition is that the hours of operation of the roof will be limited to 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Good. Is also anything we missed there? We'll get the language perfected and...
No, I think that's it.
Anything from the board that maybe we missed through the professionals' respective conditions?
The only one I think was the adjusting the lighting at the property line. I think you had mentioned that.
The revised lighting plan.
Is that in the engineers' report? Okay, that's great.
Sorry, it was not in the engineers' report. It was addressed by Andy just now.
Yeah, the third condition is that a revised lighting plan will be submitted.
And then did you also want the easements on the revised plans?
Thank you.
Anything else from the board, though, just to make sure anything in your notes that wasn't captured there? Good then. Let's open it up for deliberations. Wally, do you want to start us?
Yes.
Thank you, Wally.
I was concerned with some of the comments that were mentioned a little earlier on that this is, we shouldn't be preserving the historic nature of the building that is there. And that this would bring in more commercial use to the property. And that we quickly were dismissive of the parking issues that would be caused by the increase of commercial use. I mean, I say that I was concerned because I was going to play devil's advocate, but we don't have time for that. It is, it's like, it's an interesting property, right? It's like modern. It's there. You can see it when you drive by and you know the building's there. To the comments of the forester, right, there's some landscape even that exists. And it's nice to have downtown, but it's not like a promenade. It doesn't really serve a purpose. You don't go there like hang out. Whereas the new building and the intent is, right, it's more modern. It's certainly more welcoming, and it would be great to have this commercial use building with more light and more functionality. Yeah, I want to say that it would be great to keep this historic building there, but it's not practical. And I do think that you've overcome a lot of the things that you needed to and show that it's more functional and it's going to be, there's no detriment. It's going to be certainly better for VIA, for its neighbors, and for VIA, for downtown Summit. So, yeah, I'd be for this, for this application.
Mr. Gonzalez, Tom?
I very rarely come into a meeting and change my mind from what my initial impression was before the hearing started, but this is one of those times. I want to compliment the attorney and the witnesses for excellent presentation. I came into this very concerned about the FAR increase and somewhat less concerned about the impact on downtown parking, but I know that we can't impose a burden on the applicant for that. But in terms of the FAR, you know, between walking around the building pretty extensively yesterday and then the testimony tonight, the increased FAR is really, there's no increase in the visual height of the building. The addition in the front actually very much improves the look of the building. I mean, it's an excellent rendering. I love it when people do renderings detail like that. You can really see what the building's going to look like. Very big improvement. And the addition in the back, again, it's not, it's no visual impact, and it's no higher than what the building is now. You know, the D4, you know, the planner made a very good explanation of why we should be able to support the D4 variance. Application will improve the function of the building. I love that we're going to have retail on the first floor. That's a very positive change. Definitely going to improve the street view and, as I said, functioning the building. There's no added story to the building. It's four stories now, it'll be four stories after. The improvements for the tenant experience inside the building with the windows and the added light. I'm trying to think of something negative to say. I really can't, other than the impact on parking, which I say, you know, I think it's going to be more than what the traffic engineer, parking expert is saying if the building is full, as Mr. Jaeger, I'm sure hopes. But hopefully, the town will figure out something to do with parking. But I'll support the application.
Instead of just buttering up Mr. Jaeger all night, anybody have something negative to say about the application that we're missing?
I know you're waiting to me to... But I'm not going to do that, but I do have things to say.
Please, Andy. Actually, rarely is it, do we get an opportunity to correct something that happened a long time ago. If anyone looks at that building right now and tells me that that's a historic building, sorry, guys. You're not looking at the same building I am. If you were looking at the building that I saw when I came to Summit in '77 and '78 and all the way up until '99, we might have a conversation, but not today. We have an opportunity here to correct whoever made the decision to recess that building. And I have a faint memory of where that tree is. That window behind it is a bathroom. I mean, whoever designed that was crazy. I mean, we just got all kinds of different things there. And we get a chance to make it better. When we look across the street, you know, we talk about what, how does it fit in with the strand? How does it fit in with the building next? Look what we've approved on the other side of the street. This fits into it very, very nicely. Where, we may, maybe we're not looking at parking where they could be proposed, but we're not losing parking. I mean, they could, if they really wanted to spend a lot of money, they could shave a story off the building, push it all the way out the back to the property line, and probably figure out a way to make it compliant. You know, and just, we'd lose another eight parking spaces, which we don't want to do. Adding the rooftop garden, it's another one. This is what the fourth one we'll now have, fourth or fifth one, we'll now have in the downtown. They're popular, they're utilized. And as long as they're properly controlled, and Mr. Jaeger's proved that he can do that. And again, we'll just have to watch that if Mr. Jaeger decides to sell it to somebody, we'll have to make sure that they follow all the rules and hopefully we'll put those all in the documents that we want. So I can't see any negatives for this one. And I think adding this facility is a major positive, and I do plan to support it.
Let's not labor the point, just I think in summation. It's a narrow lot with an ugly building. This is, I'd say, thoughtfully redesigned for sure. For me, and the purposes of the resolution, I want to draw attention to the aesthetic improvements. While we may not conform with some traditional aesthetics that none of us can define, but maybe when we see it, we know what it is. It's a dramatic and positive impact, I think, for the tenants, but also for the public that will be, you know, users of the space. Want to draw attention to as well to the replacement of the non-conforming first-floor use. That's a big positive for sure in the downtown. And then just the general modernization of the building, the improvement of fire safety, for example, is worth supporting the application. For those reasons, I can support it and would encourage the board as well to do the same. So with that, and the conditions is noted, we have a motion to approve the application.
So moved.
Do a second?
Second.
Stephanie, a roll call?
Vice Chairman Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Ms. Sager?
Yes.
Mr. Faskins?
Yes.
Mr. Uco?
Yes.
Chairman Spur?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Saul. Mr. Jaeger, you got to work on the strand for us. We'll see you soon, I'm sure. All right. Let's get a little bit of housekeeping sorted. 64 Canoe Brook Parkway, a resolution for memorialization.
Okay. So we have 64 Canoe Brook Parkway. That's VB-22-2172. Our eligible voting members are Chairman Spur, Vice Chairman Steiner, Ms. Newell, Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Mullen, Mr. Malley, and Mr. Loycets. Would someone like to make a motion?
Some move.
And a second? Chairman Spur?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yeah.
The motion carries.
We have minutes for approval, March 20th, 2023.
Okay. Can we have a motion? And a second?
Second.
Can we do a voice vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Joe wasn't there, unfortunately.
He's there, yes.
Before we adjourn, I'll just note that though I promised I've been slow to finish the draft with the annual report, perhaps you've gotten some ideas from this evening's meeting. You're welcome still to send them to me via email, but it's my hope to send it to you in the next week or so so we can hopefully push it on to the governing body through a vote in the next meeting. With that, we'll see you April 17th, 2023, for the next meeting of the zoning board.